Good evening, Mayor. Microphones live, thank you. Get your squared away. The August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the City Council, the city of Springfield, Illinois called to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask the Boy Scouts, I think they're from Troop Three, is that right? If you'd come forward and lead us in the pledge, we'd appreciate it. So you can come up front and center and just face the flag, and once you start, we'll follow. Thank you. If you'd stop for a moment and introduce yourselves, we'd appreciate it. Right at the podium? If you'd tell us your name and what school? If you're working on a certain badge or anything, anything you'd like to tell us, feel free to.
Uh, we're here because we're working on the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge.
And your name?
Aria.
Aria?
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. And what school do you go to, or homeschool?
Uh, SHS.
Very good. Hello?
Hi, my name is Tillman, and I'm working on the same merit badge as him. And I go to Butler Elementary, and I'm going to Franklin Middle School.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Sir, if you'd call the roll, please.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Filgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Desenzo.
Present.
Alderman McBeniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman McDonald.
Here.
McDonald.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor of Quorum is present.
Thank you. The first item on the zoning agenda is docket number twenty-two-two-zero-three-five for the property located at thirteen-thirteen East Cornell Avenue. Petitioner is Jalisa Cheese and Devonta Anderson. Present zoning classification is R-two, single-family and duplex residence, District Section one-five-five-point-zero-one-seven. Requested zoning relief, a variance of Section one-five-five-point-one-five-seven, discontinuance of use after a residence was vacant more than six months to allow the continued use of a two-single-family dwelling units on a lot. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval, limited to the two existing residences. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is to accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept this planning and zoning recommendation.
Second.
Moved in second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, and second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the zoning passes ten voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. Next, the Chair will recognize Treasurer Buscher for a presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of July had a beginning balance of seventy-five million three-hundred-seventy-one thousand five-hundred-thirty-nine dollars. We took in total receipts of twelve million two-hundred-eighty-one thousand four-hundred-seventy-nine dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of July of twenty-five million six-hundred-twenty-five thousand five-hundred-seventy-four dollars, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of sixty-two million twenty-seven thousand four-hundred-forty-four dollars. Of that ending balance, Mayor Langfelder, incorporated in that is your ARPA fund balance, which was twenty-six million nine-hundred-eighty-two thousand one-hundred-ninety-one dollars. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Is there any?
Motion to accept. Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The next matter is a presentation by Chief Scarlet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, and thanks for the opportunity to come forward tonight. I really just wanted to give a six-month crime stat update as far as the first six months of twenty twenty-two. So what I'm about to present is really data that consists from January through June of twenty twenty-two. I'd like to begin with our calls for service, and our calls for service are relatively flat compared to our five-year average. Calls may be down slightly. That could still be in part due to some COVID effect. Written reports and crash reports remain absolutely the same as previous years. And if you guys remember, early twenty-twenty-one, we talked about the transition to the National Incident-Based Reporting System. This would take the place of the uniform crime reporting as far as how we would report our data. This was instituted nationwide, really, to modernize crime data reporting, thus creating a better picture of crime in our community, as well as giving us some proactive responses and appropriate resource allocation. The downside really is that we only have comparative data back to the beginning of twenty twenty-one. So what used to be called Part One Index Crimes is now called Group A offenses, and that consists of crimes against property as well as crimes against persons. And if you look at this overall, those numbers, those Group A offenses, have increased four-point-seven-five percent. And I think a lot of this, again, we're only going back comparing to last year's time when COVID was still at its height, so our numbers were skewed slightly last year for comparative purposes. There are really three major driving factors that we believe are the case when it comes to why these numbers are elevated. That includes our simple assaults being increased by nine percent. And then motor vehicle thefts were increased, and we believe that is due to the rash of Kia and Hyundai vehicle thefts that we've seen, not only in Springfield, but really around the nation, as due to a TikTok craze, if you will. I will say this, that we made numerous arrests as it pertains to these vehicle thefts. Typically, we see juveniles involved in this, and after working hand-in-hand with the State's Attorney's Office and the Chief Judge of the District, we were able to get the Juvenile Attention Center to change their process to now hold these juveniles accountable and actually hold them behind in custody. Additionally, we saw a huge increase in catalytic converter thefts, again, not just Springfield, but nationwide. We worked extremely hard with our surrounding jurisdictions and made multiple arrests utilizing data such as our LPRs to help us solve some of these crimes. From a homicide perspective, and again, we are talking about data from January through June, there were five homicides. Our five-year average is six. As far as shooting victims, we had twenty shooting victims, which is down from our five-year average of twenty-six, and confirmed shots fired stand at one-hundred-and-nineteen. And that may be slightly above the five-year average, however, when you compare it to the two previous years when ShotSpotter was implemented, it's actually down. Sorry about that. As you will remember, as part of the major crime wave of the early twenty-twenty-one, we took a very proactive stance on the fact that violence was not going to be tolerated in our community. This has continued. We put together a task force early on in twenty twenty-one, and although that task force has disbanded, several members have continued to go out and take a great proactive stance when it comes to firearms. So I'm proud to say that in twenty twenty-two, the first six months of the year, we've recovered two-hundred-and-eighteen firearms, which is well above our five-year average of one-hundred-and-forty-three. Additionally, we've made approximately one-hundred-and-seventeen arrests in the first six months as it pertains to firearms, and we only have three years of data to compare to, but we're well above the seventy-two that we typically have arrested to this date. Next is our high accident intersections. These are what we've seen over the last several years, very traditional. These intersections typically have not changed. The numbers themselves are very consistent with what they should be on track for as far as the yearly average. I will say, I had a good conversation with Director Bottoms, and he provided information that IDOT is working on updating some of these intersections, and Public Works has plans for several of these intersections as well. So hopefully, in the near future, these numbers will be down as a result of that. Next, I'd like to talk about technology. I know that's been very important as it pertains to some of the stuff that we've purchased over the last several years, thanks to you all for appropriating funding in our budget. ShotSpotter and the Flock license plate readers are the driving factor, you know, when it comes to data analytics and resource development. I do have four short stories I'd like to tell you on our Flock and ShotSpotter success. Officers responded to a shooting at Eleventh and Ash in which a dark-colored SUV was a suspect vehicle. Detectives searched the Flock system for the victim's vehicle and determined the exact time that the victim was at the intersection, and were able to ascertain the suspect vehicle description and identifiers that was entered into Flock. Our officers later kicked up that vehicle, pursued the vehicle almost to Decatur, and during the course of that pursuit, the occupants threw two firearms from the vehicle, which were later recovered, and two arrests were made. Number two, Street Crimes Unit attempted to conduct a traffic stop on a gold Chevy Suburban. This vehicle fled, and in fact, it had fled two times previous to this incident. The information was entered into our Flock system, and the vehicle was located because of a Flock hit in the area of Dirksen and Sangamon. Officers again attempted a traffic stop, and it fled again. However, this time, it crashed, at which point, the driver was arrested and two handguns were seized. Number three, Officers responded to Brandon Drive for a report of a ShotSpotter alert for one round being fired. Now, this is typically something we wouldn't see being called in, only one round, so it's very instrumental, this ShotSpotter hit. Officers located a subject standing outside of the vehicle, and as they approached him, he attempted to flee on foot and was ultimately detained. Officers observed a bullet hole in the passenger side of the vehicle, and during a search of the vehicle, located a firearm and arrested this felon for the weapons possession. And finally, officers responded to the area of Manor Court for a ShotSpotter alert. Officers located a victim who advised he had just been shot at, but was not injured. As part of the investigation, officers identified two other individuals in the area that were identified as being involved in the incident. Search warrant was obtained, and during the search, officers recovered almost seven pounds of marijuana and three handguns, and two individuals were arrested. These are just four very quick, down-and-dirty examples of how technology is beneficial to our agency as well as the city as a whole. There are hundreds of other great success stories, but I just wanted to highlight a few. Speaking of proactivity, I felt important that we discuss the pop-up party details. And I say this because I made it very clear to you all, to the residents of the city and to our department, that we are not going to sit back on our heels and allow similar behavior to happen this year as happened in years past. Myself and the staff put together a detail that would take place every weekend and began on May twenty-first. These details equate to four-hundred-and-seventeen officer hours, not including the assistance of multiple jurisdictions and state police. One-hundred-and-eighty-plus traffic stops, one-hundred-and-twenty-plus traffic citations, twenty-four arrests, nineteen firearms recovered. In my opinion, our response led to a major reduction in the number of sleepless nights for our residents and neighborhoods. Briefly discuss our current manpower, and keep in mind, this is through June thirtieth of the year. Our authorized strength is two-hundred-and-fifty-three. We currently, well, through June thirtieth, we were at two-hundred-and-twenty-four, with one-hundred-and-eighty-eight of those individuals actually being active, patrolling the streets, and twenty were eligible for retirement. Since this time, we hired fourteen additional recruits, and they just started the academy yesterday, putting our numbers at two-hundred-and-thirty-eight. We also have fifteen slots to fill in January of twenty twenty-three, and additional two-to-three laterals to hire. The good news, in my opinion, is that we've had early discussions about a schedule change, a hybrid schedule of some sort to begin the transition away from the twelve-hour shifts. And here's the most important part of our job, is the community engagement. And I think that these efforts, these ongoing efforts, this engagement in non-law enforcement settings is what helps build trust and legitimacy when it comes to our interaction with the citizens of Springfield. And one thing that we worked very hard at doing post-COVID was getting back out there and engaging with our community. And I'm sure that we've touched every one of your wards at some point, but I did want to just give you a brief rundown of some of the things that we've done the first six months of the year. There was Shields Ferris Wheel Day, the Polar Plunge, Junior Frontiers Event, YMCA Horse Tournament, Day of Service, Easter Egg Hunt, Boys and Girls Club, Plant with Police, Multiple Coffee with Cops, Ward Five and Six Cleanups, YMCA Healthy Kids Day, Girls on the Run Event, Open Streets Event, Touch a Truck, National Donut Day, Juneteenth, Calvary Car Wash, Bites on the Boulevard, Gun Violence Candlelight Vigil, Junior Police Academy, and so much more. And I'm extremely proud of our efforts, especially the neighborhood police officers and the homeless outreach team individuals that are in the room tonight, as well as my staff, that recognize the community engagement is really the heart and soul of what we do, so. And with that, that concludes this very brief, six-month crime report, and I'd be willing to entertain any questions that you all might have.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for that very brief presentation, short and concise, but helpful information. You know, you talked a little bit about the license plate readers, and it seems like they've been extremely successful. I saw some of those, even in the areas you mentioned, being put up one day when it happened to be in that neighborhood. But is there, is it the department's plans to continue the deployment of these throughout the city? In other words, I know we funded so many in this year's budget, but is it your plan to continue adding those to the mix?
Well, so there's, we funded eighty-four, and they're not all currently installed. We're still waiting on some help from IDOT as far as permitting process to get them all installed. My goal would be to fund, at a minimum, those eighty-four on an annual basis, as they're clearly worth their weight and very valuable tool for us.
It seems like it. I've heard about them being used in other cities successfully, and I appreciate the department bringing innovative ideas like this to us, and it's great to hear the end results and know that they're being deployed and successful. So thank you. And I'd just like you to consider, if they aren't already out there, I'm leaving it to the experts where they are initially put, but we have areas, I'm sure, in Ward Nine that would be helpful to have those, so. Thank you.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for your presentation. A little startled by the number of juvenile armed arrests, arrests for weapons. That's discouraging. But, so I've actually, I just had a quick question. The Citizens Police Academy, will that be on again this year?
Yeah, we plan on hosting that October timeframe. I don't have the exact dates, but we'll work on that.
Okay, great, because I definitely have a couple of people who are interested in attending that. It's a really great service. When you talk about your community outreach, that's a wonderful one, so thank you. Go to it.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you for that presentation. Again, I echo Alderwoman Connolly's statements on our juvenile arrests and things. And I know we have recently put some money in our focus to turn, do we have that actively rolling, or?
Yes, Assistant Chief Stunkel is in the process of getting the Focus Turns Plan up and running, and our goal, again, was to focus more on those juveniles that we felt we could really impact, yes.
I appreciate you. And my just final comment is, I want to definitely get with you and plan some more activities, you know, with the police on the east side to drum up more community engagement, more presence in a positive way in our community as well. So, you know, when you have time, let's get together.
Yeah, absolutely, and I definitely have to mention that Officer Binkley is here today, and I know you've worked hand-in-hand with him, but he has been instrumental. He's our neighborhood police officer for Beat Three Hundred, and he's been instrumental in a lot of those programs.
Absolutely, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for the presentation. One of the things I'd like, kind of piggyback on what Alderman Donlin had to say, we have neighborhood associations that might be interested in, you know, the LPRs, might be willing to pay, I think, what is it, twenty-five-hundred apiece?
Per year, yes.
I guess we, as a council, need to figure out, or if you guys want to come up with a policy that, let's just say, a neighborhood association wants to buy one or two, I know I've got one neighborhood where it's one way in, one way out, it'd be perfect, you know? What our policy will be as far as they pay for it, and then it goes on our system and whatnot, or do they have to pay for it for so many years, and then it goes on our system? I think that's something we need to look at and try to address, because I do agree that we have some neighborhood associations that might be willing to do that, to speed up. You know, obviously, they would not have access to the data at all, they'd have to follow the same guidelines. They're just merely purchasing it to get something quicker.
Yeah, and Flock is the name of the company that we use. They have several public-private partnerships where law enforcement already has established sort of these guidelines in other cities and whatnot, so I assume that'd be very simple for us to do as well.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
Chief, thanks for the presentation. Obviously, our technology's paying off, especially with the people that are coming to town from other communities, and that seventy-two connection is fading fast because of what the work you and the state police have done, along with the Decatur Police Department. One issue I wanted to ask you about is, a couple weeks ago, we passed an ordinance to have panhandlers not out in the intersections and not be in conjunction to corners. That's not working. We, the same people are still out there. Senator Turner called me last week and said, every time I drive by there, the guy's still there. So do you have a plan on the enforcement of this without, you know, Assistant Chief Stunkel came up and said, if you see him, call us? Well, no, that's not up to us. I mean, we drive by those things every day, and it should be a policy about either shagging them down the road, or writing them tickets, or doing whatever you have to do.
Yeah, I would agree, and quite frankly, I personally got out with an individual at Wabash in MacArthur the other day, and I think the plan, well, for starters, I would say that Officer Newman and Shannon Allen, who are present tonight, made it a point to drive around to all these major intersections and have conversations with individuals. And I know that doesn't necessarily, you know, may solve the problem that night, but how do we get that message across that this is not going to be tolerated? And I think, you know, is writing an ordinance violation that costs them, you know, whatever the case may be, or, you know, that they can't pay, or is that going to solve the problem? I don't necessarily know that that's the end-all, be-all. I think it's a useful tool, but I think it has to be us doing a more proactive approach as far as making individuals feel uncomfortable, if you will, that they're not going to be able to hang out there, and that's what we're committed to do.
Thanks.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to commend you all for your presence you've had in Ward Five, and also too, on Fifth and North Grand. We have seen it completely gone for the last three to four days, so I want to thank Officer Newman and Shannon too, while they're here in the room. And then the last comment I had, you said you have fifteen slots to fill by January twenty-twenty-three?
So there's an academy class for the first week of January twenty-twenty-three that we have, yes, we have fifteen openings in those classes. So Commander Pickford and Deputy Chief Dodd are actually in the process of interviewing applicants that just took our test last month, so presumably, we'll get fifteen qualified candidates out of this group that will fill that class.
Do we have any African-Americans within that group?
The report from HR was twenty-five percent minority. What specifically the makeup was, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I would like to know that, if you can send it to me, because I congratulate us for having that last class come through, but they were all men, all white, and I didn't see any African-Americans. I just strongly, and let us know too, Chief Scarlet, how can we help you with recruitment as well?
I appreciate that, and, you know, obviously, there's a background process, and the Civil Service Commission, you know, ultimately are the ones that decide whether someone
Can come forward.
passes or not, right? And unfortunately, we lost a lot of minorities during that process. And that's something that, you know, maybe we change our recruiting tactics to where we get together and come up with other avenues, but we've been instrumental with, you know, various organizations, the divine.
I mean, you've been out with me where we had girls from SIU Cardmandale that's graduating and wanting to come here, and I think it was very instrumental for you to talk to them, but please let me know how I can help you, and I think maybe just a little bit of education too, out in the community of what it takes through that process to become a police officer, and what hurdles you may hit, or what bumps in the road that may occur could be very helpful, and I would like to help you with that, but I want to strongly encourage us to stay, continuing to recruit.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the August third, twenty-twenty-two regular City Council meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? Alderman Redpath, no.
No, I, that was from before.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of the City Council meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the Consent Agenda into the record of the City Council meeting.
Don't move.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the Consent Agenda on final passage.
Don't move.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Or vote, I'm sorry. Go ahead and, go ahead and cast your vote manually, if you would, please. And the Consent Agenda passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number twenty-two-two-two-five-six and twenty-two-two-two-eight-five remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two-three-three-seven, an ordinance authorizing the creation of an exterior rehabilitation program for exterior rehabilitation purposes for areas of the city outside the Tiff Districts and the Cannabis Grant District utilizing housing building code violation fines and registration fees collected in an amount not to exceed three-hundred-thousand dollars, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of three-hundred-thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number twenty-two-two-three-three-seven on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Chair will entertain a motion to propose an amendment, number one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, we all have a copy of this at our desks. Proposed Amendment Number One would be to allow, allowed uses of these funds to bring a house into compliance in response to correcting housing and building code violations. I would move that we amend this ordinance to include that as an acceptable use of the funds.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Alderman Williams.
I'm sorry. So, in this amendment, you discussed last time that they could be cited?
Yes.
So if they're cited, does that mean they owe the city?
No, a citation would be like, let's say, someone's gutters are hanging off, and that's a violation of our code violations, of our housing code. So, but if you've got someone on a fixed income who maybe doesn't have the dexterity to climb a ladder and hammer something back up for themselves, this would allow them to use these funds to, with a fifty-fifty split, to use these funds to get that housing issue fixed.
So currently, if that's the situation, they wouldn't be allowed, if you didn't amend this, they wouldn't be allowed?
Well, my understanding is, in the Tiff District, that's not allowed. And I would, I think we could, we might want to look into amending that ordinance also to bring, so that it's in line with this one, but. to bring, so that it's in line with this one. But, um, yeah, I would like this to be used so that people can address housing violations.
Yeah, so you, you raised what my concern is, is that, um, we don't have consistency across all the programs. Your program would have this exception, whereas the people that live in the TIF and live in cannabis don't, don't make those rules, but they're under those rules. But, so now we're creating this program tonight with that exception, and I would say that w- we should fix it so that, that all the programs are the same.
I agree completely. Um, anyone is welcome to bring an ordinance to do, to correct the other programs. I don't have any of those programs in my ward, so I didn't know if it was appropriate for me to do that. But I, I would have no, I have no problem with that. I think the point of this is to allow correction of a housing violation for those people who are actively working with our housing inspectors. Um, i- this is not so someone who's been letting the violations pile up chin deep gets to come in and all of a sudden try to take advantage of this. This is, this is to work with people who want to work with the city. And I would, I would certainly support an ordinance to make matching modifications to the other programs.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I do support this, um, um, this program, as, as I have areas in my ward that, that are not in these two programs. Um, I forgot what I was gonna say. Um, it, it, it's a good program, it's gonna help out. I, I'm just more so, just mainly concerned about, um, being spread out through, through the areas that, that are fine the most and throughout the city. Um, as I said last week, um, I am gonna be bringing in, bringing some ordinance forth to address our, our TIF areas. Um, I've had some talks with our economic development department about what that would be. Me and Alderman Conley talked about, you know, even this, 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 uh, ordinance and, and making it more, um, accessible for our residents. I, I truly, truly believe that we need to address all of our matches, uh, on, in these set programs, not all of our money, but in these set programs. So, um, I'm comfortable with, with, with voting for this, 'cause, you know, we, we are gonna address those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, um, as a reminder, Mr. Clerk, could you, I was, I asked last week to be added to, as a co-sponsor to this note.
Alderman McMinimum.
Uh, this, uh, ordinance has really outstanding goals and, uh, very impressive intentions. Several concerns, however, exist. Um, this is a new spending program at three-hundred thousand dollars a year, but without any, uh, new revenue to, to pay for it. So that's number one. Number two, we don't have a proper fiscal analysis for this ordinance, which we require by our rules that the fiscal analysis says that we're gonna spend three-hundred thousand dollars, that's for the grants. But it doesn't really discuss the, um, additional staff time, which will be required to implement this program. The eligibility criteria are very, uh, strong, in my opinion. Um, you have to have a certain income limitation to get your grant. So that requires an income tax return, has to be supplied to the city. There's a requirement that property taxes be paid, that requires research time. There's a requirement that you have no city violations, that requires staff research. You can't have any city liens against the real estate, that's additional staff research. Um, the property must have active homeowner's insurance, that's additional paperwork. So after all that, um, is given to the city and, and it goes on an application, then besides the application, there's two forms that have to be executed by the recipient of the grant. There's what's called an assistance agreement, and there's a recapture agreement. So all of that is time-consuming. Then, um, pursuant to the description of the program, the grant applicant has to put down fifty percent of the cost of the improvements, um, to the city. So that's an additional step that takes up staff time. You've gotta go in and pay some money, um, to the, the city, according to the way this is writ- written here. Um, it says, the property owner must remit a hundred percent of their cost, fifty percent of the project cost, which will be held in escrow account with the city of Springfield. So that's another complicating factor. And then there has to be an inspection when this is all done. I don't know who's gonna do that inspection. Um, that would be possibly economic development, or maybe Public Works would actually go out and see that the improvement has been made that is supposed to be made. So what I'd like to see is some analysis of how much staff time this will all create, and do we have the staff to do it? So I, um, I was hoping to talk with you about it before the meeting, Aaron, and I, I got here too late, or you weren't there when I wanted to talk with you about it. But I think this is, in my opinion, is premature to pass something like this without a full, um, review of the, the cost to city staff for, for this program, which can be a very good program. My preference would be to dedicate and target neighborhoods instead of individuals. Um, this really theoretically could go to any neighborhood in Ward Seven. Ward Seven has very strong and stable neighborhoods, I would say, throughout the entire ward. And generally speaking, in the strong neighborhoods, there's been a very, uh, significant increase in the property values and equity. Homeowners have greater equity than they had two, three years ago. So in the strong neighborhoods, you're in a really good borrowing position with the banks. You can go out and borrow, and you've got a strong neighborhood, and, uh, you've got an increased equity. But in the problem neighborhoods, you've got the opposite taking place. You've got, um, declining property values, declining equity by the property owners, and they're the ones, in my opinion, that need the most help. So I think this can be a good program. I think it needs to be adjusted, um, in my opinion, for the neighborhoods that need the help. And then secondly, we need some fiscal analysis for how much staff time this would require. So that's the end of comments. Thanks.
Alderman Conley.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I was, we're currently still just on the amendment, so I was, I was gonna speak briefly to the, the ordinance as a whole, if you'd like, but I was, 'cause since we are, um, for one, one thing, um, and Alderman Gregory and I talked about this, and I actually had a brief conversation with, um, Corporation Council. It may be too distracting to have this come directly just from housing and code violations. Those funds all go into our kind of un, our, our general fund. It's, it's a term I'm always gonna use for this. It's, um, so, you know, I think realistically, we have an allocation for three-hundred thousand dollars for the ordinance for this, this initial ti- time around. I would like to not limit where those funds come from, but just at budget, at budget season in February, January, February, have another look at how the program is doing, and then just allocate funds directly to the program if we feel that it's performing well. So, um, I have a lot of confidence in, in our city staff. We have a, we have quality employees here. This is, this program requires nothing more or less than what they currently do with existing programs. So, um, it may be a little bit more work, but, um, certainly, Mayor, if you want to propose additional bodies for, uh, the Office of Economic Planning and Economic Development, um, be happy to see that. I think our staff numbers could go up. So I would urge your support for the amendment, and then I urge your yes votes on the ordinance.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so last time I also asked about how, how this would be implemented. Is it so many per ward? Um, uh, if it is citywide, how is, how are we judging? Um, first come, first served? I mean, this, this thing here is so wide open, that I feel like there's no rules to it once it's passed.
May I respond, Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, I don't feel it's our job to dictate or micromanage the, the functions of the executive agency, our, our offices. Um, they've run this program with the TIF program, so if it's a first come, first served there, then that's how it should be. And it needs to be based on income, it needs to be based on need. And I think we have inspectors in our, that work for the city who can probably, I mean, I'm sure if we called them up right now, they could list off, um, addresses in every one of our wards, where we have people who probably could use assistance like this. The point of this program is to apply a program that works well in our TIF districts to those areas in other wards that don't have access to those funds.
Okay, so is there somebody from the department that can explain? That didn't really answer my question.
And what was the question again?
The question is, how, how is this gonna be implemented as far as who gets to do it first, who gets to do it second? Uh, is it a plane system? Is it, I just think we don't have enough information, uh, to pass something like this and then not know, or have any kind of way of monitoring and controlling who's gonna be able to participate?
Yeah, it's, uh, just like a lot of ordinances, we pass them, and then we work on the processes. This is no different. But if Lynn wouldn't like to come up, economic development director, but it'd be similar to TIF or cannabis, you know, we had to really, uh, develop that process.
But it doesn't have that amendment, Mayor, it doesn't have that amendment. So maybe we should, uh, hold this until we get, get it to where all the programs are on one, one page.
I'm fine with voting on this tonight. We can bring the other ones forward. I'm not gonna hold this. We've had TIF in place for years.
So you don't, you don't see the point? You said earlier, you agree with the fact that all of our programs, um, should be under the same rules, and then you go through this list of things that are similar to the TIF and how we currently operate, but then you stop at saying, well, okay, tonight, let's amend, just say all of them are gonna be, can be cited. That's all I'm saying. Because right now, there's a difference.
Yeah, Alderman Con-
So, so I will reply to that then. Thank you, Mayor. Um, real quickly, this is literally lifted from our existing TIF program. And if someone would like to bring an amendment to the existing TIF programs, like Alderman Gregory has mentioned, I would support that a hundred percent. We could have that, we could have that passed very quickly. But I, I'm not really willing to hold this old program.
Well, just amend this, is what I'm saying.
I'm amending this program so that it's the functioning the way I think it needs to function.
Uh, I guess the, our preference would be, um, we'd come with the recommendation, then amend it at that time. But it sounds like, you know, I agree with the council and, you know, the general public, they like, um, consistency. So that's what we'd look at. But of course, uh, we have challenging situations, you know, with cannabis, they're more flexible funds. Uh, TIF is somewhat a little more restrictive, where it has to go before the Economic Development Commission. And then these would be, uh, more of the parameters based on city guidelines with regards to spending authority. So, um, we would, but what we need to determine is, of course, the income guidelines, um, and things associated with that. And then with, uh, Lynn's been at it, what, a week? But Krista Colas has, uh, been working on community development block grant funds, and she can give an overview of that if you'd like. But, uh, we'll take a look at it and make a recommendation on the process, or come back and say, here's how the program's going to work. But right now, uh, it has to pass first, and then we work out the procedures.
Yeah, as long as, and if we could not act on, uh, making this program operational until he has time to put his amendment in, um-
Oh.
To put us all on the same, on the-
That's not the point.
All on the same rule, under the same rule. I have people right now that don't qualify because they're cited or that they owe. And I'm just trying to make it all even across the board, whether it's that program, this, any program. You know, we have to keep the rules consistent, and this amendment makes it different than other programs. So if we can pass it, if that's what the Alderman wants, Mayor, what I'm saying is, to make it operational is after all of them are on the same level.
And actually, Aldi, uh, this program is kind of what we're doing. Uh, we, you know, our fellow Harvard, or Harvard fellow from last, uh, year, I believe it was, came, one of the recommendations they made was having economic development come to our administrative courts. And so someone from economic development comes up, and if someone has a violation, they work with the individual. If they qualify according to income guidelines with community development block grant funds, or if they're in the TIF, we can help them with that. So in a way, we're doing it. Um, and this kind of falls that arrangement. But I don't know if either one of you would like to state anything further on that, as far as the administrative courts part of it.
Do you want to talk a little bit about Healthy Homes? I mean, isn't that what we would mirror the same program?
Okay, so, uh, what we're doing, uh, in utilizing, we have, uh, five different housing programs right now, um, through our department, um, on the CDBG and HUD side. Uh, that's excluding our TIF and exterior rehab and cannabis programs. Um, so we're going to admin court every week, uh, the other gal in our office is going, and we are getting a list from, um, Katia, and they tell us what houses are on the, basically the demo list. And, uh, then we are trying to assist those with those five programs that we currently have. And of course, if they fell in a TIF or cannabis, but we're trying to get to the most in need houses, the ones that are cited the most. And then when we're working with them, so does, um, the legal department, to make sure that their debts are deferred. And so that's kind of what we're doing with the admin court. So, um, I agree, not, uh, letting them get to the point, we're, at the citation phase, is fantastic. It's, it's a great idea. Um, we do have a lot of funds currently in the office that is trying to assist, but if you guys want to give us more funds, we're, we're more than happy to take them.
And people, right?
And people. We need people. But we have a lot of programs right now. Um, probably, um, our housing programs are, um, at a point where I think they're stronger than they ever have been. So, um, where we're at. And if you guys want us to do a little bit more?
Well, no, so my question goes to, um, the order of receiving the services. You're, you're describing a situation with your courts and what you're doing there. In this situation, if Alderman Conley knows folks that could utilize this new program she's proposing, and I know folks, who's going first?
Okay.
You, you follow what I'm saying? How?
I, I, I do. I, I, um, so for all of our CDBG and our HUD entitlement, we, um, we prioritize and rank the applicants according to needs. We have a priority ranking scale. Again, with the TIF and the cannabis, because they're all different pots of money, right? They all have their separate rules. But for any HUD program, I can only serve very low, low to moderate. I cannot serve an eighty percent to the exclusion of a very low income. For our lead program, we prioritize the households with children under, or age six. They gotta own the home, they privately own rentals. Um, we have a Healthy Homes production that, uh, can service our elderly, our disabled, our very low, low to moderate. So it just kind of goes like that. Um, we have eighty applicants currently on our list. So, um, we're trying to assist. I got inspectors six weeks ago. So we're starting to roll it out. So, uh, each program's gonna have its separate, um, you know, requirements. What I have to do is serve the eighty percent below the moderate income and prioritize according to the funding source we're using.
Alderman-
So however you guys want us to do the three-hundred thousand dollars, we will do it.
Alderman with purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. You, I'mma just back up, 'cause you said a lot.
Well, I'm sorry.
You said that you all are being proactive, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. You're being proactive by, when you go to admin court, you receive who has it, and then you go after those houses that's on the demolition list to try to help them with one of the five.
If, if, if it fits within the parameters of our program. They always have to fit. HUD is very strict on what they will fund, and it's a long process, but yes.
Do you do a report on those, those houses?
Um, they are, uh, so internally, there's your court, uh, a list of houses given, and then we respond to what programs we can assist those folks with. And then, um, Elizabeth in our office has been going to admin court and talking to all the folks. And then when they come in, the ones that are eligible for our assistance, we're getting them right on in. You know, it, and again, they're prioritized and ranked. So-
Can you send me specifically for Ward Five, so I can help assist you too? You guys have been very helpful to the people that I sent to you, and Robbie talks to them. So I thank you too for doing what you're doing.
We're working real close together.
Yeah, I want to be proactive with you on that report that you do too, so I can help assist as well. So thank you for sharing that.
No problem.
We'll send that to everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Alderman McMinimum.
Again, the, the intention here is outstanding. They'll provide financial assistance, um, increase equalized assessed valuation of properties. I've tried to, um, quantify how much, how many property owners might be impacted by this. So the, the guidelines are that you, we can give up to fifteen thousand dollars of financial assist, assistance per applicant. So if just by chance, the folks that really want this money come in, it's first come, first served, and they got a thirty-thousand-dollar project, they get in real quick, and they get fifteen thousand dollars of assistance, half the project. We've got twenty, twenty homes could be approved, twenty homes. That's how far, that's how, how much three-hundred thousand gets stretched. Twenty homes. Um, that's two per ward. Uh, let, let's think about that. How, how much impact does two homes in a ward of five thousand- How much impact does two homes in a ward of 5,000 single-family homes do? It doesn't do, in my opinion, it doesn't impact the neighborhood because it's not enough. If we had $3 million, let's do it. We could really have some impact. But what we're doing here is, we're using, this is a discretionary spending on the city's part. We're adding another spending program. When our mandatory spending continues to be ignored, I'm talking about our pensions. We can't get out of our pensions. That's a mandatory obligation. This is a discretionary new program. So I think for the long-term good of the city, we're better off, if we've got an extra $300,000 to throw around, let's put it into our pensions. This here, it's just not going to have enough impact. I wish it would have impact, but I don't think it'll have enough impact to justify itself. It'll justify itself to the lucky few that get the relief, you know? We might have 200 applications, and we might, you know, there might be 30 or 40 lucky enough to be first in, first out. So we're, you're kind of helping the lucky few. But as far as the neighborhood impact, I just don't, don't see it. So that's the reason for, I'm going to be a no vote on this.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. You know, what this is about is, there's areas of town that have a lot of programs with them. And there's areas of town that have no programs with them. And I've, I just, this last week, I dealt with a lady that her power bill's gone up. And this won't help that, but I was able to work with CWLP, and I appreciate their help, to get this lady connected, and she was within the income level to where she could get the senior citizen discount, whatever. She's thrilled, absolutely thrilled. I've got, I've had people that have had trees that they couldn't afford to get cut down. And they were dangerous. I've had people with a, you know, an elderly man that had to leave his house and sell it because he couldn't afford to pay the gutter, to get the gutters, and he was getting cited. You know, we don't have programs in Ward 10. This, these are things I can use. And I'm sure Ward 9, you probably don't have any programs. Joe, I don't think you have programs in Ward 7. You know, we have to, Ward 1's probably the same thing. You got to understand that we have people that can't afford to do even the simplest things. And quite frankly, you know, on a, on a, you know, $1,500 tree deal, paying 750, that's going to be tough as it is. But it's not just on certain parts of town that need this. That we're, you know, this gives us the opportunity to try to help people stay in their homes and not lose their homes. And an 85-year-old person is not going to go to the bank and get a loan on social security. They're just not going to ha, it's not going to happen. And I, I think this is a great program. I think we need to move it. If the TIF needs to be changed, then bring an amendment. Alderman Williams, you can bring the amendment. Doesn't have to be Alderman Gregory, you can bring it. You know, and I'd be for, I think we have to have consistency. But this is good, and I think we need to move forward with it.
Alderman Conley, then Alderman Williams.
Thank you. I'm just going to be real brief and say, I have a number of neighborhoods in my ward that encompass older neighborhoods. Most of the people on the streets are really trying very hard to stabilize their neighborhood. They put pride into their homes. It can take but one house. And, and, you know, your soffit starts tilting, and then it starts looking not as good. If your stairs aren't as easy to get up, that, those are difficult, expensive things for people who have a limited income. And then the neighborhood looks less good. So I actually will very vehemently disagree with you, Alderman McMinimum, and that's just me. But one house on a street, making an improvement to one house on a street can stabilize that entire street. I've seen it, I've lived it in where I've lived in the past. So I don't want to belabor, we're still voting on the amendment. But I appreciate everyone's thoughts, everyone's input. I'm certainly looking forward, Alderman Gregory or Alderman Williams, if you want to work together on another ordinance to make similar changes. I don't want to hold this program just because other programs that have been in place, anyone could have amended them at any time. I don't want to hold this opportunity back because others haven't gotten there yet. But I'm happy to work with you to get those other programs up to par.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, I think there's a misunderstanding. We all think the program's great, and we want it. I'm thinking other people that I know want it, based on what they're saying, what Alderman Hanauer is describing, it's not going to happen. Because those people, under your criteria, are still not in 10. If we're doing it fairly, this is why I keep going to the point of, is it going to be two for ward? This is why I'm after the rules. Because I'm trying to show you that, under that criteria that they just explained, we just got another program, and it will start with all those qualifications that the ladies have explained to us.
But it's in the ordinance.
And it doesn't guarantee you that you're, it's going to make, you're going to still be over there saying, they got programs and we don't. Just, yeah, because guess what? We still qualify for the same program too. That's what they just said.
But my point is, we have people in our wards that qualify too.
But so how, so are we?
Stop being divisive about it, it's for everybody.
So I'm asking, are we having two to a ward, Mayor? Are we having, you know, how are we doing this? That's my whole point. So that everybody can have a part of this. Because if it's under the current rules, I don't know how this thing is going to turn out. That's why I'm asking, before my people start calling me, say, hey, I want to sign up. Hey, I want it, I'm not in the TIF, I'm not in marijuana, I want it too. And guess what? That's not fixing what you're thinking. So all I'm trying to do is say, do we know enough about this to know what the rules are going to be and how this is going to be implemented out there to get it done? Alderman Conley, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, Mayor, since you've asked me, can I respond, please?
What we would do is, I'd recommend we get two weeks, and we'd come back and give a presentation, say, here's how we're going to do it.
Well, I'm trying to figure out, we gotta know more.
It's in the ordinance, actually.
Sure, Alderman Conley, and then Alderman McMinimum and Alderman Donlin.
It's in the ordinance. You have to qualify under the CDBG income guidelines. Do you ask them how they, I mean, we don't micromanage how they?
Because it's all there.
Let me finish my sentence.
Let her finish, please.
I'm not done talking.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much. We don't micromanage offices under the mayor. We don't, I'm not going to tell them, you have to do two per ward, I want, I want all 50 applications from Ward 8. It's a first come, first served, you have to qualify under the qualifications that are listed in the ordinance. I don't think we need to be getting into playing, I, I'm sorry, Director Wooden, I want to say welcome, by the way. I didn't intend to reach out to you before tonight's meeting, and life got busy. Welcome to council tonight. I don't think it's our part, and we've typically not gotten into micromanaging offices under the direction of the mayor. We have professionals who run these offices. If you come back in and say, oh, great, thank you, Conley, we just got 500 applications, then timestamp them and bring them in as you do with any other application to any of these other programs. I understand, Alderman Williams, that the devil can be in the details. But I also think that at a certain level, we set policy and the executive branch implements it. So certainly looking forward to seeing how this is implemented. But the point of this program is to make a small pool of funds available to a larger group of people.
Alderman McMinimum, and then Alderman Donlin.
I mean, the goal to help people is an outstanding goal. But when it comes to economic development, we have to think about saving neighborhoods where the entire neighborhood is going downhill. You know, we've got neighborhoods in Springfield where, if you go, if you walk the street, every house needs siding, repair, or soffit repair, or window repair, or a driveway crack repair, or the lateral water into the house is leaking, or the lateral sewer leaving the house is plugged during severe events, or the garage door needs repair, or the gutter needs repair, or the whole house needs painted. You can, there's neighborhoods in Springfield where every house is that way. And that's where you need to put neighborhood focus, as opposed to some lucky few, and they could come from any part of town, and it's not going to be many people, not many folks. Maybe 20, 40 projects in a city with 30,000 single-family homes.
Happy to add more money.
Are you interrupting me like you interrupted Alderman Williams?
Yeah.
So I think this is discretionary spending. I think we've got extra money in our budget. We should put it to pensions, or focus on the actual problem neighborhoods. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Donlin.
Mayor, I'm having so much fun, I'd like to suggest, I'd like to suggest that we vote on the amendment, and then?
Thank you very much.
Discussion's warranted, we can have it.
All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries.
Question.
Discussion on the ordinance as amended. Alderman McMinimum.
I've made my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
So I move that we adopt this ordinance as amended.
Second.
I move second to adopt the ordinance as amended, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the, Alderman Fugenzi, and Alderman Purchase.
How do you press these?
Okay. And the ordinance passes eight voting yes, I believe, and two voting no. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2022-339, an ordinance approving professional service agreement with Wood Group USA, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $59,500 for engineering study to evaluate the prospect of converting Dollman's Unit 4 to an entirely natural gas operation for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2022-339 on final pass.
Second.
I move second, any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Hanauer, then Alderman Redpath.
I faster at pushing my butt.
That's quicker than mine.
And I'm stealing this from Alderman Redpath. He brought up something that I think is worthwhile. Why are we not also looking at Unit 33? If we're going to do this, why won't Unit 33, you know, what it costs to do that as well? That gives us plenty of extra power. Just, and I meant to call you and ask you beforehand, but I thought I'd give you the opportunity to respond.
Well, it's a different, kind of a different reason that we're doing this. So with Unit 4, what are our options if we end up with a coal price that's too high? So, you know, the coal mine and our operation are symbiotic relationship, right? So, you know, at some point in the future, we don't know when, or how much, or why, or where, you know, that kind of things. But at some point in the future, the coal price could be at a point where we can't compete with the market. So we need to have our options available to us, just in case that happens. And one of the options is to convert Unit 4 to natural gas. So it's not really a reliability question as far as, you know, like, well, hey, can we just bring back 33, you know, with natural gas? You know, we could consider that as an option in addition to Unit 4. But remember, 33, it would be over $4 million to get it repaired, just for the turbine.
Okay.
So that's, and there's other permitting issues as well with 33, going to natural gas versus Unit 4. Unit 4, going from coal to natural gas, you know, you're reducing your emissions. So it's easier to get permitting for that versus 33 that the EPA really considers it more or less retired. So then going forward with natural gas would be increasing emissions for the site. So it's, there's federal, you know, limitations on emissions and stuff like that for 33 that we have to look at. But plus the cost probably to stay 33, don't know that for sure. But I'm assuming it's going to be probably more expensive just to do the study too. It's a different, a different group, not Wood Group, because Wood is the, basically the boiler, the kind of the train, OEM, the equipment manufacturer, that's why they have to do the study, to determine what modifications would have to be made to do that. Does that answer your question good enough?
Thank you, yes.
Alderman Redpath.
That answered part of my question, but if we do this study, could, if we thought we could use 33, could we, could this study be converted over to that, if we thought we could use it?
It would have to be a separate study with a different company. We'd have to look at what companies could actually do Unit 33 for that. Because it's, with, the Wood Group was originally Scott, who was Wood Group before? No, Wood Group.
Oh, it was Foster Wheeler.
Foster Wheeler was the original manufacturer, basically, for the Unit 4 boiler. So they have the drawings, the designs, to say how they can change the boiler, the burners. They also own the, basically the scrubber technology for Unit 4. So they would be able to tell us what process we could cool the, basically the steam, you know, that's coming through the stack. With that, with 33, it's a little bit different, because there's different vendors for different components of 33. So we might actually would have to hire probably maybe like a, well, that's true, that's right. I forgot, I'm forgetting that though. So 33's got a bypass.
That all makes sense.
What did Scott Rogers say? If you'd come up, Scott, not everybody heard.
33 is a bypass, so we wouldn't have to go through the scrubber. It's got a brick stack, so the heat wouldn't bother it.
Right.
4 was designed with a fiberglass liner in it, so we have to cool it, or you'll melt the fiberglass out of it.
That makes sense. I just, I'm just trying to think through all this. But so if we got in the natural gas business, that's going to put us in direct competition with the Pawnee plant that's coming in process.
That would be another option as well. So we would look at Unit 4, we would look at Ember Clear. You know, the question would be, you know, with those options, do we want to own our own generation or not? But that's, the study is basically to give us one of those components, one component, to look at all those different options as we go forward over the next few years.
And one of the biggest expense to do a conversion is that we have to do a pipeline, a gas pipeline into our plant, is that correct?
Most likely, yes.
And we already have a gas turbine out on Interstate 55 that has a pipeline into that, is that right? So what would, what would the, what would the cost be if we got to the point where we thought we had to go to natural gas and increasing the size of the interstate turbine to fulfill some of our needs for that? Because there's already a pipeline there, right?
Yeah, that would be another way to look at it, as far as seeing what all these costs are, and evaluate whether you're going to add a unit. I would say that the issue's going to probably come into play is that, with the new energy bill that was passed last year, if we built another gas turbine of a considerable, anything over 25 megawatts, it has to be shut down by 2045.
Or converted to hydrogen.
Or converted to hydrogen, you know, but that puts us in a whole different realm, stuff that, you know, costing wise, we probably wouldn't be prepared to even consider just yet, but.
One point on that, interstate is a simple cycle, which means it's just a gas turbine. The plant, Pawnee, is a combined cycle. So it's a gas turbine, they capture the excess heat and run a steam turbine on top of it. So they somewhat have some free energy, if you will, by capturing that heat.
But as I, but as I've said in the past, anything could happen after November if the politics change. And I don't know if they are, we don't know what's going to happen. But the policies for the environmental plans and requirements that we have to uphold could change, right?
Yes.
So coal could change, natural gas. And we're all for being diverse in our, in our utilities, with solar and with wind, with natural gas, with coal. So anything could happen. But, you know, I'm going to support this because I think we need to look at it. We absolutely have to have an idea in our head of what we're going to do, but.
This is just one of the items that we're, we have to do our due diligence on.
Will they look at, they look at the capacity of the interstate, or is it just for the Unit 4?
This is strictly just for Unit 4.
Okay.
For that cost.
Thank you.
Alderman Fugenzi.
Yes, one of the things I wondered about, if we produce more power and it's available for us, don't we have to sell it to MISO and they sell it back to us, or how does that work?
If our load is less than, you know, our generation that we have available, and the market calls for it, then we would sell it into the market. But generally speaking, our load is high enough. But generally speaking, um, that our load is high enough that, you know, Four basically is a base load generator. So what I mean by that is it covers our base load. Now, accounting-wise, there's, you know, we do sell our generation into the market and then buy it back for our load on two different accounting lines, but that's really all it is. So when we sell that, it has to cover our load, so that automatically comes back, back to us at the same, at basically the same price. So, you know, it sounds odd, but it's, it's, it's more of an accounting thing than it is, um, you know, that we're not truly just selling it and then we're not, we're buying it back at a higher price. That's not really, that's not the case.
I mean, you're, you're right, though. Any excess, if there's excess energy we produce over our load, we sell it back at market price. Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then the ordinance passes nine voting yes, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is number twenty-two-two dash three-four-five, an ordinance approving the appointment of Shetiria Smith to the Springfield Community Relations Commission. The chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda number twenty-two-two dash three-four-five on final passage.
So move.
Second.
A move in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, uh, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two dash three-fifty-three, an ordinance to increase the number of Class One, or Class One liquor licenses by one for Ruby Funeral Services and Crematories, Inc., doing business as Ruby Recreational Community Center located at one zero one North Sixteenth Street. Chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda number of twenty-two-two dash three-five-three on final passage. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
No. No. Um, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, discussion. Alderman Gregory.
Please, um, I, you know, we.
How, how about this motion for discussion?
Second.
Second. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Alderman Gregory?
Yes, um, you know, I, I've, I've looked into this and, and, um, for this type of situation, the venue that this was, I've, I've taken some calls and support and, and, and against this. And, you know, I just really want to go with my first mind and, and, and not approve this, um, in this particular area. I'm all for expansion of business in my community. Uh, we need business in our community, but we need it in the right places. And, um, you know, this area, um, has, has, we're, we're just now trying to get it under control from the pop-up parties that we hear. You know, I'm out at six o'clock in the morning when we have an issue over there, because that neighborhood is that sensitive, you know, to, to the issues. And, um, you know, I, I just don't want to complicate it by, by adding, adding this and, um, we, in this, in this youthful area that we, that we want it to be.
Any other discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
Real quick, is there, was there limits placed on this, Alderman Gregory, where, uh, on, as far as the, how late it can stay open? Or is, is, what's a Class, Class One or Class I? What is?
Aye.
Class I, what is?
Corporates Council, you want to go over that, please?
A Class I, we don't have that many of those, but it's essentially like a banquet hall or a meeting room. So it allows for the service of alcohol in like a meeting or banquet room, banquet room.
And is there, is there, uh, there are limits on the, the length that?
I believe it has the same hours as our normal licenses, which is not to exceed one o'clock. All right.
Alderman Gregory?
Uh, I was just going to say, you know, I, I, unfortunately, I, I just, you know, can't, can't support this in this, in this area. And, and, um, you know, I, you know, I, I support businesses, you know, growing and, and, and doing things, but, you know, it has to be the right business in the right area. And, you know, we, we definitely have, you know, a church right behind this location. And I have a, a daycare of some sort to the, to the, uh, north of this location, you know, among other things that we're doing in this area. You know, it's just not the right area for this particular situation.
And any other discussion? So is it, is there a motion for action of some type?
This is the first one that I've ever probably denied, a zoning situation, uh, mayor, so I would need corporation counsel to advise me if, if I'm going to deny this.
Um, if there is, if there is a motion to approve, then a no vote would be to deny it. A yes vote would be to grant it. You may recall that under our process, the city council controls the number of licenses, which is why you see these, uh, come forward. So the ordinance is actually to allow the creation of the, in this case, Class I license for this purpose. So the council is, would be free to either create, you know, grant the additional license or, uh, basically indicate no that you do not, uh, support that.
My mayor, real quick. Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
So, so Mr. Zirkle, in this case, and I'm just, I'm just bringing this up, I'm not.
I hear you.
If they, if they went ahead with the purchase of this, this, they could, they could have people bring their own alcohol in and there's nothing we could do about it, right? As long as they have the.
And, and then we would deal with it, you know, as, as we need to. But, um, you know, we've had these talks and, uh, about the differences and, and, and her worry, I get it. I, I, I get it, you know? That's sort of why my hesitation is, 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 you know, I, I don't think to, um, get around somebody doing something that they shouldn't be, that we just give them a, a license in this area. I just, you know, I just think alcohol in this particular spot is, 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 is going to cause me a headache and, and whoever's sitting in the seat, so.
Thank you.
That's just where I'm at.
So there's, is there a motion, did you say? Motion to send it back to committee or?
Correct.
Motion to, motion to send back to committee? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's sent back to committee. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two dash three-fifty-eight, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with Downtown Parking, Inc. For purchase of the land and all improvements located at Fourth and Washington Street, P I N fourteen dash thirty-four point zero dash one zero three dash zero two four, and in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars and closing costs in the amount of five thousand dollars. And for the total amount not to exceed one hundred five thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda number twenty-two-two dash three-five-eight on final passage.
So move.
Second.
A move in second, uh, discussion, Alderwoman Conley.
Um, good, Mayor, thank you. Um, again, I think this was the one where we just needed to know what fund line this was coming from, and I don't see that, so.
One ninety-five.
One ninety-five, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and, uh, Alderwoman, actually, that is the proposed amendment number one. It does specify the O ninety-five.
Motion to approve the amendment, second.
With, with the specific line item.
Yep, thank you very much. I didn't look at all those yet.
Sorry about that. A move in second to approve the amendment to designate the fund as, uh, zero ninety-five.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Alderman Redpath?
Is, was this put out for RFP, or did they approach us, or how'd this work?
Yep, Corporates Council.
This is the, you may recall, this is the, this was a small piece that's at the very back of the, uh, uh, ramp that was torn down, plus where the, um, one property we acquired, so this basically squares out. And the, they had approached the city about one of two things. Either, uh, they would like it to be, uh, completely repaid because of damage done during the demolition, because it, it joins right there, or gave the option of basically, uh, selling it. And so the, uh, thought was through Public Works was to go ahead and acquire it, it just squares it out. And, uh, that way it can be done really as an integrated process of the whole parking lot, not, not separated out.
I got it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the, is there a motion for the ordinance as amended?
So move.
Move.
Second.
A move in second. Any discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those in favor say, or vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two dash three-sixty, a res- resolution referring a petition to the regional, Springfield Regional Planning Zoning Commission for a public hearing in consideration proposing an amendment to Chapter one-five-five, Section one-five-five point four-nine-six of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to cannabis organizations modifying separation provisions. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number twenty-two-two dash three-sixty on final passage.
Um, Mr. Mayor, you know, um, and I may need help from corporate counsel on this. I know folks are here to speak to this and I want them to speak, but I would like to, um, amend this or, uh, find a way to send this to Sangamon County Regional Planning. Because, uh, my intent, uh, was to use the industrial parks because I did not want Ward Three in particular to be excluded. And the rules that we were operating on pretty much excluded not just Ward Three, but pretty much East. And I, I was trying to fix that by saying, well, let's just utilize our industrial parks. This has, um, deteriorated into the boogeyman and all kinds of other things. So, uh, the purpose of my amendment now is to try to get the professionals to weigh in on this, on, um, industrial parks, the usage of them for this purpose, and, and to see what they think and feel about this.
So, uh, first, there should be a motion for approval, and then we can move for an amendment.
Then we'd discuss the amendment separately.
Okay.
Yes.
So is there a motion for approval?
Yes, I'm making a motion.
Is there a second? A move in second.
Discussion.
Yep, uh, on the amendment, uh, so.
Oh, no.
Is there a motion for amendment?
Yes, I'm sorry.
And the amendment was passed out, distributed. Do you want to go over it, Corporates Council?
The, and the, 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 you may recall, just very briefly, the process on these is that the, uh, under state law, under the zoning, uh, rules and so on that we follow, the council, when it chooses to consider changing the zoning code and requirements, we have to, the city has to file a petition like anybody else. So the effect of this, and this has happened before, actually, when the original cannabis was done and so on, this is the normal process where the resolution refers the petition. It goes through the staff, the regional planning staff and the zoning board. They review it, take evidence, you know, hear testimony, then they come back with a recommendation like any zoning case. So ultimately, it comes back to the city council, uh, for a final, you know, for final action, just like tonight, we had a zoning case, same process. Now, one of the questions came up, um, uh, with some individual council members. In, uh, instead of specifying the exact, uh, distances, instead of specifying the distances, the amendment would allow the, basically, uh, ask the planning staff and the commission to make a recommendation on what the setback should be. So you have their input, uh, on what the setback should be, rather than trying to specify it in the petition. So it's a request for them to make a recommendation to the city council as it relates to the amendment.
Yes, and, and it's my understanding that, uh, it, it's only a recommendation. It still is ultimately back to us and for us to decide.
That is correct. It's like any zoning matter, the council would request in this particular case, because remember, just very briefly, the, uh, city council actually has the authority to zone, meaning it doesn't have to be the property owner. The city council actually has the authority to zone a property that they do not own, uh, that the city doesn't own. So this is the process we follow whenever we're referring a matter to the commission. Uh, staff reviews it, commission reviews it, it comes back with a recommendation. And then the council, you know, either adopts it or changes it or rejects it, whatever it might be.
Any other discussion on the amendment? So it's been moved to amend, um, is there a second? Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes.
I think we need a roll call on that.
Roll call.
It's already passed. You got to ask for the roll call ahead of time.
Roll call on the amendment? All right. Alderman Redpath?
No.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Alderman Filginsy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase?
No.
Alderwoman DeSensio?
No.
Alderman McMenamin?
I see no problem asking for advice. I'm a yes.
Alderwoman Conley?
No.
Alderman Donlin?
No.
Alderman Hanauer?
No.
You have six no's and four yeses. Okay, so the amendment fails. Is there a motion for the ordinance as presented?
Yes, I make a motion for the ordinance as, I mean, I may as, uh, presented then.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Alderwoman Purchase?
Yes, I have received the email, well, I received numerous emails, Mayor, but this particular one asked me to read it on their behalf. It said, "Good evening, Alderwoman Purchase. I apologize that I cannot be in attendance tonight due to a personal commitment. However, I ask for your consideration in reading this statement from me. Damian Johnson, CEO of Ameren Valley Industries, LLC. First of all, I am in support for changes to the adult-use cannabis ordinances for Springfield, Illinois. However, I don't understand why we are considering a proposal for changes now versus eighteen months ago when I first proposed similar changes. I stood in front of the city council and everyone looked at me as if I was invisible. A year later, my attorney and I met with General Counsel Zirkle, Mayor Langfelder, Alderman Gregory and Alderman Williams to further assist with shaping up cannabis ordinances to mimic the state law. Since that, since that was the goal, but nothing was done, and here we are now looking to address these same ordinances. Why now? There weren't changed for me, but for some reason, there appears to be a difference with who the petitioner is now. If we truly wish to mimic the state law, the only setbacks would be fifteen hundred linear feet between cannabis businesses. However, we have existing setbacks that must be addressed, and here is how to address them. I agree with Alderman Hanauer that there should be, there should not be any difference between liquor establishments and cannabis businesses. I believe that there should be reasonableness to our current standing. All residentially zoned properties should be removed from the cannabis ordinance setback language. The CPU language should stay because that is present in other cities in Illinois. And it gives the city the opportunity to perform due, due diligence on these projects to ensure that they will be good businesses and operators in our city. In addition, there is a state precedent in Peoria, Illinois, where the setback is six hundred from sensitive areas. In addition, Peoria designated that all industrial zoned properties are approved for cannabis business use by human right. In closing, we are the capital of Illinois, and we should be leading in any and all efforts that move our city forward. So let's take this time to structure a series of ordinances that will allow businesses to establish here now and in the future. And finally, we need to be headed in the right direction of a more equitable cannabis industry. Thank you, Damian Johnson.
Any other discussion? Alderman McMenamin?
I've got some comments, but a question. I, I can't remember the Damian Johnson situation. Did he ask for, um, a referral to the zoning commission regarding industrial sites?
I would defer to my colleagues because I wasn't here for the whole duration of him coming forward to the city council.
Yeah, he had a, my memory serves me, he had a site picked out in Ward Ten. But that never, I thought it was referred, but, uh, I didn't think the, he had the backing or something financially. But Alderman, uh, Hanauer?
As far as I know, he still has a site, uh, out in Ward Ten that we, we changed the zoning, we changed the zoning for. But I believe he was looking at it, at something over, Sean, I, I'm not sure was, if it was your ward or, but, and, and, but there was never.
Well, I've still got the floor, I hope, but, um, I think you've done, that's the way I remember it, Alderman Hanauer, that we approved the zoning for Damian Johnson, but then his financing went, went, fell apart and he didn't go forward with the actual construction. You know, I think there's, I, I think it's good to ask for advice. You know, I think there's, I think it's good to ask for advice from those that can think about this and compare us to other cities and so forth. What I also remember though is when we were considering that dispersment of cannabis dispensary downtown, my recollection is that there was a church nearby and we modified the zoning to allow it to happen. We also had the public library nearby with all the children that go there to our city public library, where I'm talking about the dispensary at the corner of Seventh and Adams. And so it just seems to me that we modified things to let that happen. And by the way, I voted no to all that. I never thought it was a good idea to have a dispensary right in the middle of a historic downtown. I voted no. But here we, it's a situation where they want to put it on the periphery of the city in an industrial center and we won't even allow the staffers that think about this, that we've made commissioners in the zoning commission to offer an opinion. I think it makes sense to send it to them for an opinion and let the, those that care about this, you know, present their ideas to the zoning commission and then let them come up with the best recommendation. And then the city council still has the final say on it down the road.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with David. We do need to take a look at our overall setbacks for this industry as more and more of these licenses get back, especially to allow our minority owners to get a shot now that they're finally getting their licenses. You know, this particular ordinance that is before us is not about any location. I know it's gotten out there a little bit about a location over in Alderwoman DeSensio's ward. You know, before me, there was, you know, going to be a moratorium in Ward Two about no liquor at all. And I said, no, I want to take everything case by case. And I think this is the same example that we need to take with this industry. There are some areas that, in our industrial zones that I look at, Mr. McLaughlin gave me a map earlier, that would work. I think we've talked about some of them and there's some others that, I guess what the community, I read 151 comments the other day, you know, and they're a little bit up in the air about it. So, you know, for me, if this was to pass, you know, it still has a CPU on it, it still has to come back to council for a vote. And generally, we all go with what our respective aldermen and alderwomen want zoning-wise in their wards and, you know, I wouldn't change that process going forward. That's my spiel, so thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase?
I'm not for sure if this letter that was sitting on our desk, did this just come from Brown, Hayes and Stevens? I don't know if everyone got a chance to read it, but the school district is, the district is urging the city to maintain the current code setback requirements and distance standards for cannabis establishments. I just literally read this just before this ordinance came up on here tonight and we have the school district even asking us not to participate. And did everybody get a chance to read that?
Alderman Gregory?
Yes, I, you know, I did read that, Alderwoman Purchase, and, you know, I definitely agree with them. We want to be careful with what goes around our schools, you know, but this industry is like twice as far as alcohol. Spammy's is right down the street from Harvard Park. It's going to be as equally as close as this thing. So that's not like a valid argument. Our schools and the community that they're in, some of them wouldn't blink an eye. Some of them are going to throw a fit and that's what we have to allow the ability for people to even ask. Right now, nobody can even ask about it. And that's more the point why I support this ordinance, is to give people the option to ask for a certain location throughout the city. We may find some areas in our industrial zones where we can fit another business in and that's why I support this ordinance. But, you know, I respect, you know, this firm, but this further drives the stigmatism of the cannabis. You know, we have liquor stores all over this place, we have bars all over this place. I don't know about you, but, you know, I've done both and I'll tell you what, the alcohol is a doozy. So I respect them, but I disagree with that statement, you know, as far as that.
Alderman Williams?
Yes, so the school district's response, you know, from my conversations with them is they're reacting to one site. They're reacting to where their new school building is going out there and their Harvard Park Elementary School that's there. So they're kind of just reacting to the word and the activity on the next door and all that stuff about one site. This ordinance covers all industrial parks, not just one. So all of them would be looked at and be considered, and I just want people to remember that this isn't about any particular one site. This is about using, to make industrial parks available for the ask, as the alderman is saying. Each alderman still would hear the person that's doing the ask and decide if this is good for their ward or not and through the CPU process, is going to survive or it's not going to survive. So it's not taking the power away from an alderman to know and participate in what's going in his ward. It was requested not to have CPUs. I'd say, well, then I can't sponsor it if we don't keep the CPU in place because I know that for Ward Three, if somebody's going to do something, I need to know about it and check with certain neighborhood associations and all that kind of stuff. So I just want you to know, that's why I try to open this thing up. I feel right now, under the current rules, there's a lot of exclusion going on. And by the way, Mayor, just want you to know, there's folks here that want to speak to this too.
Alderman, or Alderwoman Purchase and Alderwoman Conley?
I will wait because I do want to hear the people who would like to speak, but I just wanted to rebuttal off of what Sean had said. It would have been nice because the way it was presented to me and me and Alderwoman DeSensio have some of the same neighborhood associations, everybody was under the assumption that Jeff Philginsy is wanting it over in Ward Six in a certain industrial building. So to say that we're trying to find other buildings, it would be nice for the sponsor to tell us where are some of those other industrial buildings to help out with that argument since there's a lot of misleading information.
I don't think there's an address in my, my.
But do you have any that was in mind to kind of help with?
I do know a map was produced.
Maybe I can add clarity with regards to, when this cannabis discussion first started, I only wanted industrial areas. And the reason for that is, you know, somewhat, you know, it's a new territory, we're blazing a trail, no pun intended, with regards to that, but the industrial area, you're going there for a purpose. You know, whether it's sales, grow or infusion, you're going there for a purpose. So that was my first intent, but the council decided to do business, which is a lower intensity, you know, business area. And so I know Alderman Hanauer wasn't too excited when they converted a theater into a retail, as Alderman McMenamin pointed out with downtown. That's why I always thought the industrial areas were the perfect fit. Because if you want to go into industrial area, most of us don't drive through unless we're going to visit a specific business. And so unfortunately, the council went the direction we did and now we've kind of excluded industrial areas, which is kind of upside down when you think about it because we have dilapidated buildings there and this is for existing buildings. And so that's why we wanted, we thought it'd be important to, all of it is excluded, is my understanding. The current parameters, nobody can locate in industrial areas. But you can have an asphalt plant, you can have a liquor store, you can have all these other heavy industrial uses in industrial areas with zero yard setbacks on the side, twenty feet front and rear yard setback, twenty feet. And so that's why we thought, well, maybe five hundred and two hundred feet makes sense, it's more restrictive, but we understand everybody's concerns because I think that's why it was important for the CPU to remain in place. But really, with regards to what the gentleman sent to you, that's the reason to take it to regional planning. Let the professionals offer their professional opinion and advice instead of us all wrangling about what it should be. Because that's what the City of Springfield pays regional planning for, they are our planners. And so we should rely upon them to provide us the advice, especially when industrial areas can't be used for cannabis, but they can be used for all these intensive purposes. But we can go to, you know, Park South and you can go buy out there, you can go downtown and buy and, you know, there's going to be a push for grow in those areas, which I'm not for. I think it should be in industrial areas if we can, you know, make the right approach. But I think that's why we pay regional planning to weigh in on that particular situation. Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, I've gotten no support for setbacks this short. Two hundred feet from a residential facility, from a private residence, five hundred feet from a school daycare. I've, I've gotten no support for this from residents in my ward. And if my memory, my memory serves correctly, the building that we had a zoning case to put in the Center for Health and Housing is still currently zoned industrial. Across the street from, you know, Urban League, I think this has potential to be more invasive than a facility that was, you know, intended to be helping people. I would certainly be open to us talking and we don't have to have an ordinance. I mean, Mayor, can't we just ask regional planning to give us, you know, an analysis of different zoning setbacks and areas within the city and then within, and compare that to other communities? I would be interested in that. I think we should be looking at that. I will just tell you, I've, I've had people reach out significantly concerned, especially with the two hundred feet from a private residence. And I understand if you live near an area that's zoned industrial, I mean, we assume that means it's a big kind of industrial park, but we know that that's not actually always the case. And so, you know, I certainly would be interested in getting research from them, but we're paying them, we don't need to send an ordinance, we could just make a request. And I, am I correct in that?
Corpus Council?
Corporation Council?
I believe that we could make an informal request. The resolution is not an ordinance, what you have before is not an ordinance. So it's just a formal way to ask, you know, whether, whether it is the amendment, the two hundred, eight hundred, it's, that's a formal way to ask.
Two hundred, five hundred, right?
Yep. Or if it's, tell us what you think we should do. So there, it's just a formal way to ask them to please write up a report and send it to the council.
And I think, and I'm not saying, tell us what you think we should do, I'd like to know what other communities are doing. And I think, and Alderman Gregory, we've talked about this. I'm willing to, I'm willing to look at setbacks, I absolutely am. The feedback I've gotten is that this is a step too far. So I think that we should keep our minds open and we should be looking to regional planning for their input if they, you know, compare us with other communities, see where it's working, see what setbacks are being implemented in the state. I just wanted to explain, that's why my vote will be a no. I've gotten only negative feedback on these setbacks that they're too much for our community, at least for Ward Eight.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you. I, you know, I've heard that, you know, this Center of Health and Housing thing, it passed eight to two for one. It could have went there if we didn't have this riff. And again, it has a CPU. So if this was to pass and they tried to put it there, I would say no. I would encourage our council to support me, just like if this thing passes and it goes over there, Alderwoman DeSensio is not for it, we're probably going to support her. That's just how we work with zoning cases. You know, so this was a tough one. If the CPU wasn't on there, I wouldn't be talking about this, you know, but I feel like I must talk about this and I know, we talk about residency, that's not in the state law. I know we support this passage from a state level and what they did for it, it was really, it was really meant to, one, take away something that was putting, you know, people in jail at mass numbers for things that they shouldn't have, you know. And, and, and we have had a hard time, when I say we, I'm saying black males have had a hard time and black women have had a hard time getting into this industry, right? We got some people now that has these licenses, one of them sitting out in the crowd today. And then when we get up here, you know, it's only two of us, it's three of us with Alderwoman Purchase. But yet and still, the control of this industry is coming from all, everybody else. And it's like our opinion doesn't count and that bothers me, even with the thousand feet that we're talking about. Like when in this particular industry, in my community and his community, our opinions have to start being a little stronger in things that are meant for us. And I'm saying this just because it's been on my heart and if I don't say it, then, then I bottle it all up and then I'll go off with something small like what happened a few weeks ago. So I, you know, it bothers me with it. Like I say, this has a CPU on it. If it didn't, we all have a right to make these decisions when they come across our desk. Alderwoman Conley, I didn't even know that was an industrial zone because, because guess what? If it comes anywhere in the neighborhood, the reason why I voted against that is because the neighborhood didn't want it there and they had some valid points. It had nothing to do with that I didn't want to help homeless or the people in the neighborhood didn't want to help homeless. They had some valid points of why they didn't want it there. And, 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 you know, some may respect them and some may not, but I go with, more so what my community wants, more so than what I may even think best. And that's what we have to start doing in government. That's just how I govern. I don't care, I'll sleep right next to it. I stay in Harvard Park, I represent some of Harvard Park as well. And you can trust and believe me, I'm not going to take in three blocks of it, four blocks of it from Alderwoman DeSensio and then go do something and make them all mad. That's not, that's not how I operate. So, you know, I really wish we would have addressed this a long time ago when we've been talking about it, been talking about it. And this, this, my buddy up there as well, Damian put it in the, in the thing. I'm disappointed. We speak on ordinances, trust me, this probably, I got probably about ten ordinances, but he, in my feeling, take a lot of flack because everybody's saying, oh, there's so much going on the east side. It's terrible in my ward. I got some real, real deal Holyfield problems. So that's why we need all that money, that little bit of money, the cannabis money, the tip money, it ain't doing much of nothing because nobody can access it. That's what I'm saying. Like, so with this industry, you know, I hope in the future, this, this thing, you know, I wish we would have just sent it to the regional planning so we could get a real, take us all out of it, take all of our emotion out of it, all of our personal opinions and get an independent body to advise us how we can make this industry successful. How can we be fair? As it is, guess what? Nobody else is going to come into this town and be able to open up anything else as it is. We're going to have to look at it some way, somehow, and I know we said we'll look at it boundary-wise and things of that nature and I hope we really do and I hope we're sincere in this, so I apologize for taking up so much time.
Alderman Williams?
Good job. So, well, you know, we kind of already took care of it, ordinance versus resolution going over there to ask, you know, we're asking not so much of ordinance, so we got that clear. On the piece where she brings up the daycare, I'll just say this, because, you know, Alderman Hanauer brought up daycare a last time. And when I thought about that, I'm thinking, okay, a daycare and a building with plants growing in it harming kids versus a building with homeless people who have alcoholic problems, you ain't going to like this, drug addiction, mental illness, yet this council saw fit that that could be across the street and probably fifty feet from a daycare. But we got a problem with a building with some plants growing in it with all these features that the state's requiring of them so that it is safe and people can get in it. I mean, it ain't like the kids is going to be able to come across the street and get in it. These are the type of decisions that we continually make and we continually do, but yet I just don't understand why, why we do this. Now, you threw that out, I don't know if you're throwing a punch or whatever, but what I'm saying to you is, that's how I see that. I see that as, one is a building with plants in it and the other was a whole different thing, which by the way, you guys won, like he said, eight to two it passed. It was just bigger people decided, I'm pulling out of this one because they saw the merits. They saw it for what it really is. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yeah, you know, it kind of cracks me up when some aldermen try to kill an idea or a proposal by saying, you know, my constituents are all against it or all for it.
I've been on this council eleven years and my phone number's out there. I've got a dedicated phone number regarding ward activity, city council activity. My email address is out there, my cell phone number is out there. When I send out an email to Ward Seven, I'm sending to almost 2,000 email addresses now. 2,000 email addresses that I communicate with. Now, here's what I'm going to say. I have not received a single phone call or message of any kind from Ward Seven constituent regarding this II, this industrial zone area. But some aldermen try to act like it's, you know, there's a wave of public sentiment moving one way or the other way. It's not there, folks. I'll tell you what, I'm getting phone calls. I just went through my email. I got twenty-eight emails or phone calls or messages. Three regarding fiber optic, I three. Ten of them regarding infrastructure improvements on Worson, where your mother lives, and other sidewalks there. It's all favorable there, but they needed to get it worked out. Two regarding cresta court infrastructure. Three phone messages regarding a three-way stop sign near Butler School. Two regarding outer parking block today near Hy-Vee with the county sanitary district not notifying the city that they're going to block outer park today. Three regarding unload city areas that need to be mowed. Few regarding problem properties, you know, in Ward Seven, you know, do something about, send an inspector. Those are the phone calls I'm getting. Nothing about cannabis. But we want to kind of kill this by acting like there's some wave of public opinion out there. Folks, I think the public wants this to refer to the professionals and let them give us an opinion. That's my opinion.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you. Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify, Alderman Williams. The reason I brought that building up is because that is zoned as industrial, and I'm not sure that people consider industrial to be, you know, smaller building sites located within the communities. So that was my only clarification there.
Thank you. Alderman Purchase?
You know, last week I talked about having respect up here. And Alderman McMenamin, you've still hit some points today that was pretty shady on things that just happened. I don't have to lie about constituents sending emails or phone calls because a gentleman who's in the audience is getting ready to come up and speak up here, and he was also included on those emails and phone calls. So I'm sorry that Ward Seven is not thinking about the marijuana, but there's neighborhood associations in Ward Five. We don't all operate the same, so let's have some respect for each other when you try to call people out.
You just used my name, but I didn't use your name.
Let me finish. Let me finish.
Alderman Purchase has the floor.
Let me finish. We have to have respect up here. We all operate differently in our wards, and we should respect what people tell us. You can't tell us that somebody did not call us or somebody is not making phone calls. I'm pretty sure some of the other items that you just named, we all get as well, too. And I'm diligent about returning phone calls and sending emails out. And that's just what I wanted to say to you because you're continuing to dig, and it makes us more divided when you say things like this as well.
Mr. Mayor, I got a response. Yeah. So Alderman Purchase, you might recall that the woman to my left made the sweeping statements. I don't even recall you making the sweeping statements, but what I'm trying to make is a more generalized comment about my observations, eleven years on the council. There are occasions when folks exaggerate and try to paint a picture that, in my opinion, doesn't exist because I haven't received a single phone call. My, people know how to contact me if they do. And the point I'm trying to make is, I've got a very civic-minded ward where people pay attention to the news to the extent they can. And the point I'm trying to make is, I haven't received a single phone call from constituents about this cannabis issue. That's the point I'm trying to make. So I'm sorry if that offended you, but that's the point I'm trying to make.
Alderman Hanauer?
Thank you. I am confused to no end at this point because I know one alderman up here that's had people show up and give us the sermons about the evils of marijuana and stuff, and now he's for it. I'm like...
I'm for a referral.
No.
Go ahead and direct your comments to the chair, please. Thank you.
Mayor, can we, is there a way we can move this to allow the people to speak?
Sure.
I mean, we don't need the back and forth between the council members and that, but my mind is just fried right now from what I'm hearing.
No pun intended either.
No pun intended. I didn't have any gummies before.
No gummy balls.
Anybody wish to come up and address the council on this issue? If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Edward Maurice Williams, and I represent Lincoln Labs. On behalf of Lincoln Labs, we are one of the craft grow companies that would like to locate here in Springfield, Illinois. As a craft grow, we have concern about some of the zoning rules and the extremities of those rules. We have three potential locations, one of them being an industrial park where none of them fit the current zoning criteria. It's virtually impossible for us to get in and be able to make a difference in the community under these current zoning laws. We need to be in an existing building to be able to better that building within that community. And with the cost of raw materials and the interest rates increasing as they are currently, it's just, it's almost virtually impossible to build a brand-new building and be able to be relevant and be competitive with prices in other areas for us to benefit from this as a community. I feel like this business would create revenue that would be spent back in the community. It would give jobs to those in the community. It's going to help the community, being that we have seen how the laws have freed some of the incarcerated. You know, those individuals, they know the business. They know what sells. They know what works. Take that that was once looked at as a negative and make it a positive to where those people can actually see benefit from their knowledge, you know, for lack of saying something different. I mean, those people were frowned upon, you know? I mean, this is going to give them the opportunity to be able to use that science, that biology, to be able to make their communities better. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come up and address the council? If you'd state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
You, Mayor, and aldermen, I'll work quickly. My name is Jeff Fulgenzi. I live in Sherman, 413 Aintree Chase, within the 1,500-foot setback from the city limits. Pleased to be before you tonight. This is an important issue. I represent the, I'm a board member for the Illinois Craft Grow Association. I was a grant writer for many years and spent eight years at the Regional Planning Commission. I've spent time as an elected official, so taken time to understand this, taken time to ask professional staff questions. Thank you for the effort to try to get information on the floor. It's disturbing how much misinformation has been spread about in the community. I've been receiving calls, I've been making calls from neighborhood associations, from school board members. First, let me thank the nine aldermen who took time to talk to me, to hear us out. It's interesting that all the ruckus that has been created and all the misinformation is coming from one of the aldermen who refused to talk to us over the last month. But I digress. What we're talking about here tonight, and Maurice talked about it, we're talking about investment exclusion zones. Do we have the presentation? Is that loaded? Thank you. What we're talking about is investment exclusion zones. To the city's credit, you did, in fact, create an ordinance two years ago to allow these type of investments in your community, in our community. Much like the Act when it was created, you know, we worked with the staff members, they shopped the Cannabis Act around the legislature to get the votes. One staffer told me if they wanted a rocket port, they would have included it if they could have gotten the votes. So there were a lot of decisions made two years ago to get the votes, to overcome the reefer madness and the fear mongering that exists from the anti-cannabis crowd. So what we're talking about are investment exclusion zones. We applaud Governor Pritzker and his administration for creating this program and allowing the companies I worked with and the applications we put together the opportunity to succeed and to actually receive a license. As Alderman Gregory pointed out, opportunities are limited. I myself would not have had the opportunity. I'm a minority member of our company, Route 66 Rec. We went through great pains to apply for our license, to receive our license. We actually were disqualified. At the same time, my friend Damian Johnson was awarded a license. We were disqualified. I won't talk about how that felt, but we thought we had a perfect application. We sued because we thought we were wronged. We won. We won our case. We found out that we and the others that we helped write actually had a perfect score. Not only do we have a perfect score, we had two department-issue bonus points on our perfect application, summarily disqualified. We won, it was remedied, we were awarded our license in March. So now we have to quickly find a building. We're under the gun by the state of Illinois. We have one year. It was originally six months, they just changed it. We have one year to become operational. We've been four months almost trying to get to this point. So these delays, although I think having professional staff engage and talk to us and provide us professional answers is critical, these delays drive these companies out of town. I worked for the Lead Economic Development Agency for many years. I was trained as a certified economic developer. I'm a community planner. I wrote a lot of community plans that exist here in Sangamon County. When we wrote plans, we created industrial parks. And next to the industrial parks, we put homes in these plans. Much like Springfield grew out, the industrial parks are created and homes were created nearby because we wanted workers to live near where they work. As social equity craft grow companies, we want to employ people affected by the social equity program. Is this my, am I the clicker? Thank you. Somebody's clicking for me. So the question is, if not in the industrial parks, and I want to specify industrial parks, that's what we're talking about here. If we can't do these in the industrial parks, where can we? There's a gentleman that wants to speak here in a moment. He has an infusing license, twenty, a half mile, 2,500 feet for an infuser. Now, an infuser, you know, I understand a lot of people don't know what these things are, but an infuser is nothing more than somebody taking extracted THC oil and making gummies. But we have a 2,500-foot setback for this kitchen? I'll go on. So the question is here today, are these types of uses appropriate for the industrial parks? Unequivocally, the answer is yes. Unequivocally, the answer is yes. These should be allowed in industrial parks. We can put racetracks, we can put sewage plants, chemical plants, slaughterhouses, steel stamping, we can put heliports. I can grow hemp right now in the industrial parks, 30,000 square feet of the building we have an interest in, 30,000 square feet with zero emission controls because it's currently allowed by city ordinance and state law. We can grow industrial hemp there right now. We are inaugural growers of industrial hemp. And because THC's in it, all of a sudden, there's the reefer madness and the fear mongering. So what you have here is, your current zoning redlines out the industrial parks. What you see here on the slide on the left is the industrial park. And, you know, some of you know I'm a proud, proud North Ender. We would prefer to be in the North End. I would prefer to be in my old county board district near my family's restaurant, but we have an exclusion zone. These ordinance redlines these jobs and these investments from every industrial park in town. What you have here is Interstate 55. The circle on the left, I'm talking about the left screen, the big circle right there is a narrow strip of residential zoning that is directly across, in fact, 211 feet, Alderman, 211 feet from Teamster Way. 1,500 feet from that residential zoning across the divided interstate, one of the busiest around, excludes that entire industrial park. We've got vacant buildings in the industrial park, we've got vacant land in the industrial park, but that strip of land, 211 feet away across the divided highway, creates a redline. We are excluding jobs. You've created, unfortunately, an investment exclusion zone with this ordinance. Let's step across the interstate, the second circle on the left-hand side, left screen. That's Coke Plant, Coke Plant, that area out there, 54, the truck stops out there, that's east of the interstate. There's an industrial park there. We talked with owners of land where we preferred to go, and they were going to work with us. They were going to give us land and, you know, pay for it when we're in revenue. We can't go there, and why? We can't go there because people chose to build Irisdale subdivision next to the industrial park. And why wouldn't they? The land's cheap, right? There's risk. There's noise risk, there's smell risk, there's lots of risk. So we're going to take advantage of that, and I'm going to live near an industrial park and maybe work in the industrial park. They took that risk when they moved there to be a racetrack, a slaughterhouse, an oil plant, an oil refinery. I'll jump to the slide on the left. In my old county board district, we spent years, as people are doing now, and making great strides, trying to figure out what do we do with Pillsbury Mills? Pillsbury Mills today, if it was green grass, would be excluded and redlined from cannabis investments. And why? Because people chose to build homes near the industrial park. If not industrial parks, where? Next slide, please. The disproportionately impacted areas. So why are these companies qualifying for cannabis, social equity craft growth? The state of Illinois and Governor Pritzker recognize the disproportionately impacted areas are areas in which there's historic marijuana arrests in the failed war against cannabis. These areas, according to history, identify where the arrests were in Springfield. Where are they? North Side, South Side, and East Side. We didn't see a lot of arrests on the West Side. I don't think West Ender smoked much marijuana back in those days. It was just... I'm sorry?
They definitely did.
They didn't get arrested.
Okay. They didn't get arrested? Okay. Yeah, there was no arrests in that area town, but they were on the North Side, South Side, and East Side, coincidentally, the same areas where we want to invest. So if you lived in that area five of the last 10 years, you qualify. My partners qualify. We got a perfect score on our application. We're craft grow. Next slide, please. The map on your right, and I really hesitated to even talk about this because I don't want to raise this issue, but this is, in fact, what we're talking about. This slide here is a 1940s map that was included in Bev Bunch's study for historic redlining in Springfield. And if those of you that aren't familiar with redlining, and that's where the bankers said, "We're not going to loan to the low-income neighborhoods." Interestingly, this is the same area that is now excluded by the zoning ordinance that we have here. These jobs are intended for the low-income communities. We want to employ low-to-moderate income people from these neighborhoods. We want to build our building, excuse me, we want to renovate a vacant building, as do our partners in other areas, in that area. We shouldn't continue the mistakes of the past. This industry is booming. There's no industry known to man right now that's accelerating as fast as the cannabis industry. As much as I hate to see this council bickering back and forth about anything, I appreciated the comment about, "What are we going to do with all the money? What are we going to do with all the money? I want it, you want it, they want it? What are these cool things we can do?" I'm going to talk in a moment about the money. This industry's booming, the jobs are creating. We think, let me go to the next slide. Why do we think this is important? Once fully and operational, we're allowed to grow 5,000 square feet of canopy. According to our application, the perfect application to the state, we indicated we were going to create 25 to 30 full-time jobs. I see it says 20 there, it's typo. On our application, we recommended, or we indicated, we were going to create 25 to On our application, we recommended, or we indicated, we were going to create 25 to 30 full-time jobs, good jobs, union jobs, once we're fully operational. Why are we going into existing buildings? As was mentioned previously, we had plans to build. Interest rates have gone up 4%. There's material delays. Other companies, there was 100 of these licenses awarded. Some are building out right now, including Damian Johnson, who packed up and went to Danville, unfortunately. We want to go into these blighted buildings and take advantage of the lower cost. These are already built, and we can really get the economy to scale and save a lot of money. We're going to create significant tax revenue for the school districts, for our employees. Another point, you know, we talk about young people. You know, my plans that we created with others, why are people leaving? What are we going to do? This industry attracts young people. Do we want to keep people in Springfield? Give them the industry that they like. Give them the industry that they're interested in. Cresco, 210,000 square feet in Lincoln, I'm told employs over 400 people. I talked to the mayor again today. He called me back. He's been quite aggressive in reaching out to us, quite frankly. That community recognizes the benefit of that company up there. They see the employees visiting the stores and volunteering in the community. Young people are flooding this industry with their resumes. They want to be in this industry.
If you'd wrap it up, please, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, thank you. I've got a lot to say, so let me talk about smell. I should have, next slide, please, I should have our resident scrubber expert talk about this, but very simply, if we can scrub burning coal into white steam, we certainly can reduce the smell of growing plants. The biggest risk to our industry is outside air. We're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to ensure that there's no smell. We don't believe it'll smell outside of the building at all, and we think we've got research to support that. As far as children knowing what's going on, there is no signage. The kids won't know what's going on nor would they care, and they're in such a distance, they won't even be able to see these buildings. The buildings are monitored 24/7 by the state police, full-time cameras, no outside signage, fencing, no public access. No one from the public is allowed to go into these buildings. You have to send your information to the state police and take weeks and months to get approval to go there. Protecting the kids. I read the letter today. Much like the neighborhood groups, and I talked to the school district yet again today, I think they received some bad information, much like many of the neighborhood groups. We need to correct the information. There's some perceived threat to schoolchildren for these properties. There's not. We would do nothing to create a threat for my children and anyone else's children. The four or five different parcels that we're looking at, this is the third one that I'm looking at, the other one that Damian was interested in, we were interested as well, is Rochester Road, that I think was asked earlier. Rochester Road is a building that's perfect, vacant, 40,000-square-foot building, but it has residential zoning 300 feet away. We don't want to go near schools. In fact, we could probably accept 800 feet for all zoning classes except residential zoning because, again, people build homes near residences. We, I have in front of me the zoning ordinance for alcohol, for gaming, 100 feet, 100 feet. So the building that we're interested in, one of many, between the school and our building we're interested in, 1,480 feet, which, by the way, the schoolchildren are buffered by two bars, a liquor store, and a gaming center. So we think there's a protection of the buffer from these plants that grow quietly into the night. And I'll stop Mr. Mayor on having to answer questions.
Alderman Williams? Do you have a question?
No, they can finish.
Thank you. Please ask me questions.
Any questions? Is there anybody else wish to, any comments on this issue?
Can I make one final comment on a personal nature? This isn't about Jeff Fulgenzi. This isn't about the Fulgenzi family. This is about...
Mayor, you have rules that you read to everyone before they come up here to speak, and I didn't hear those rules read tonight.
As far as directing comments to the chair?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, thank you.
This ordinance isn't about the Fulgenzi family. We've been engaged in public service and public businesses, Alderman, Mayor?
Thank you.
All my life. At no time have we been shady. At no time, Mr. Mayor, have we ever done anything for personal benefit that didn't benefit the community. It's true, I live in Sherman. I used to be engaged in economic development. We loved it when people wanted to come to town and invest millions of dollars and create jobs, but here, this is a problem. This is not about any other Fulgenzi. This is about the company that we've helped create. It's not about my father. He doesn't control what I do, as much as he's been upset with me at times in the past about that. I have free will. You shouldn't criticize, Alderman, Mayor, other Aldermen for what their children want to do. We're trying to invest in our community. We're trying to, important point, I got to talk about this, Mayor, and I'm sorry for going on, money. We're a social equity company. We're required by the act. We put in our application, we're going to have significant community engagement. We're talking about being required to give away hundreds of thousands of dollars to our community of choice for our community engagement because that's what the governor wanted in the program. Please don't force us to leave Sangamon County like Damian Johnson did to invest our money. We want to be in the communities we care about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
So what I would say is that, so all I really wanted to do was to not be excluded out the program, being a disproportionately impacted area as pertaining to the definition of the program. And after driving Damian Johnson around and experiencing not being able to use the buildings that we came across that were in these industrial parks, that's where this intent and this motivation is coming from. Before I even knew he had, or he had his license, I lost Damian. He had to tell me I got to leave Springfield. Me and Sean went rounds and rounds about some things about cannabis, but cannabis is so complex and so big with so many parts to it that I think when you get, you know, the bickering about one part affects the other part, like the R3 stuff, that's a whole total kettle works. So I'll say I was trying to use industrial parks to use some abandoned buildings that a lot of my constituents saying, "Well, you going to do with them raggedy buildings, them building, you know, to do some of that? And number two, to make sure that we don't create any more Damian Johnsons. Nobody else has to leave Springfield." So I did kind of fight with the Senator and Sean on setbacks. You know, it took me there. It took me to that point, and that's where all this is coming from. Since then, it's evolved into something else, and all I was doing tonight was saying, "Let's let the experts, let's let the professionals over at regional planning weigh in on this and give us their advice or their opinion about some of the stuff that maybe we ain't quite the experts on." That's all this was about. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I think there was a motion to approve. Is that correct? Second, all those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open.
I thought I pressed it.
Sorry. And the motion fails. Four voting yes, six voting no. Chair Lentain obtained a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda Number 2022-369. An ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $649,997 from the city's corporate ARPA funds to the Water ARPA fund, a transfer of funds of $49,997 from one account to another, and to authorize and accept an agreement with Emerson Process Management Power and Water Solutions for the purchase of water purification plant, distributed control system, Evergreen upgrade in an amount not to exceed $649,997 for the Office of Public Utilities. Chair Lentain motioned to put that on first reading, please.
We'll move.
Second.
The movement's second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? Come before the city council? Is there any Alderman Purchase?
Thank you. Corporation Council, were you able to ever get something in writing about what conflict of interest is and what we can vote on and what we can't vote on?
It is very fact-dependent, fact-dependent. I think we've talked about this a few times, that a member of the city council, any legislative body, should not vote on something where they have a personal interest, contract, some pecuniary interest in the issue that's being voted upon. There's also a concern, or at least some have indicated a concern, about the appearance of a conflict, the appearance, and therefore avoiding that. If there's a specific issue, then I'm happy to do something more formally, but those are just the general rules. But it's whether or not a specific conflict exists is very fact-dependent, fact-dependent.
I would encourage you to still put this in writing because, did you just see the screen?
I'm sorry?
Did you just see the screen for the votes? So you just, what you just said was if you have an interest in what's being voted on.
A financial interest, like a contract or ownership interest, financial interest.
And then what was the second thing you said?
In that sometimes people will apply if there's an appearance of a conflict, an appearance. There are, and again, I can give you some kind of generic information, you know, regarding that, but if you're talking about an individual vote, I really need to get the exact factual circumstances.
I can tell you now the appearance of how this just went down, where John Fulgenzi just voted for this ordinance with his son, but yet I was yelled at, all type of stuff when it came to the TIF vote. It looks like it is definitely one-sided. I'm sure we'll be hearing about this. So could you please put something in writing?
Be happy to do that, some general information. And there are, just by way of information, there's quite a few attorney general opinions on this very issue, what's appropriate to vote on, when a conflict exists. There's numerous ones involving, for example, school boards, where a school board member might have a family member that is employed at the school district, things of that nature. So there are quite, there's quite a bit of guidance on what constitutes a legal conflict of interest where a member should not, you know, be casting a vote.
I was told that you strongly encouraged that not to happen, and I just watched it on the screen happen.
I'll be happy to put some information together.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
I just, I just wanted to, now that we're in new business, old business, but I do want, for the next first reading, if we could, Mr. Zerpa, if you could draft, and maybe we can get together, but if we can draft ordinances for our SHA and Far East TIF, I would like to make some changes to that, not only to, for the homeowners to be able to use that fine, but I think our match needs to be lowered on that. I've had some conversations with our economic development department, and they were thinking sliding scale, and I really, really think that it just needs to go to 10% like the cannabis grants. And this is only for that section, that $250,000 that we put aside, not for the whole 8 million, just for that section. So if somebody has an $8,000 roof to be fixed, they would pay $800 and get the roof fixed. I think that's fair, and I think that's going to move along housing repairs in both these TIFs. That would be what I would like, and I will reduce it to writing. And, you know, one final note, you know, we all are Aldermen and Alderwomen, and I'll say this, you know, you hear how everybody up here calls me just Sean, and I don't care if you call me Alderman or Sean or anything like that, but that's the humility in me. And I think sometimes we forget about that. We're just people, and things happen, we get emotional. It's not always disrespect. It's sort of fire. I love every last one of y'all, and, you know, it's a pleasure for me to serve up here. And I just wanted to say that, as has, again, been on my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McMenamin?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this conflict of interest issue. I think our city attorney should give legal advice and speak to the fact that there's a legal conflict of interest when there's a direct financial interest involved. That means, for example, if we own property and the city's about to buy our real estate, we can't vote on that because it's a direct financial interest. We can be benefited or hurt by that. The appearance of conflict, that's for each one of us to decide how we should handle that. It's not, the city attorney doesn't give advice on appearance of conflict, in my opinion. That's outside of the scope. Now, let me, you know, as far as Alderman Fulgenzi, because he's got a son that's interested in something. You know, we're not saying that Alderman Redpath cannot vote on the treasurer's budget because he's got a daughter that works in the treasurer's office. We're not saying that, are we? We're not saying that Alderman Redpath can never vote on a police contract because his son is a police officer. We're not saying that, are we? We're not saying that Alderman Redpath can never vote on the budget for the police because he's got a son in the, no, we're not saying that. And I don't, that's a son-father relationship. It's not a direct financial relationship. And so I think Alderman Fulgenzi's been treated unfairly here because he does not violate the conflict of interest rules, in my opinion. And I don't think you do, as far as what I know, as far as Enos Park. Do you own any of those lots that Enos Park owns? Are you an officer of Enos Park? Did you obligate yourself on any loans that Enos Park took from a bank? I think those are the kinds of questions that have to be answered that would be relevant to whether there's a direct financial interest or not. That's my opinion, so I hope, I just, I don't like the way Alderman Fulgenzi's been treated around here.
Alderman DeSenzio?
Well, Alderman McMenamin, you're the one who called him out last week, actually, not me.
You called him out.
No, I didn't. I said a son.
Everybody knew who you were referring to.
Well, there are...
Let's let Alderman DeSenzio.
Thank you. There are actually nine of us up here who have sons, nine of us. The only person up here who doesn't have a son is Alderwoman Purchase. And by the way, if we're talking about the difference between being a police officer with the Springfield Police Department and owning what's going to be a multimillion-dollar business, that's apples and oranges. So let's, let's keep it on the same level here. That's completely different things. So, you know, again, Alderman Williams was the one who called out Alderwoman Purchase weeks ago, and I backed him up because I know she's been involved in Enos Park. I know she had been involved in the past. I know she had profited from that program in the past. To me, to me, in my mind, that's a conflict of interest. Maybe my ethics are different than yours, but that isn't really what I even pushed my button to speak about, but I'll go ahead and let you finish, Alderman McMenamin. It was a totally different subject, but...
Alderman McMenamin?
The question is whether John Fulgenzi has an ownership interest in the craft growing. That's the only question that's relevant, and to my knowledge, he has no financial interest. He has no ownership interest in the craft business, period.
Well, his whole family just sat in the audience, so take that as you will.
You're kind of insinuating something. That's not relevant to the question. Does John Fulgenzi have a financial interest?
I don't know.
I don't know if we'll ever know.
I don't know.
Any other old business or unfinished business?
Yes.
Alderman DeSenzio?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did bring this up to the Springfield Police Department as well as Public Works, but the Grand Central Neighborhood started getting ticketed for parking in front of their own houses over the past few weeks. Some people have lived there 20, 30 years, had never had a permit to live in their own neighborhood. There are only two areas of the city where this applies to. I think it's ridiculous that they have to go through this process. So I'm going to be bringing ordinance forward. Or, you know, have to obtain a permit. We're not, this is not Chicago, and there's street parking. And, you know, Friday night, I start getting bombarded, and I have no answers to these questions because it's not anything I was ever aware of. Yes, there is signage there, but it had never been enforced, to the point where people who bought houses in recent years said, their Realtors said to them, hey, this is never going to go anywhere. You know, you don't have to, we've never had a problem with that. So just, I'm going to be bringing ordinance forward on that.
Very good. Yeah, that was, probably antiquated nowadays, because I think the state built a ramp over there, didn't they, on South Grand? And so originally, when the state moved over the old Sears Building, there's complaints from the neighbors with regards to parking. So that's where they came up with this system. And so that's, you know, it's probably outlived its useful life.
There you go.
So again, if you do have the, anybody that did receive a ticket, they should let us know, and then the chief can review those and, if they're issued by Springfield Police Department, but chief, if you want.
We've been in communication, and so, yeah, so far afforded one of those tickets to them.
I just had one real quick comment. We, Officer Muston and Sergeant Doss did walk that area today and provide a letter on SPD letterhead, essentially informing the residents of the residential permit program and how to go about getting a permit. And obviously, to your point, Mayor, we can certainly get those folks registered and take care of any tickets until the ordinance is brought forth.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Permits are free.
Thank you.
That's right, Nate.
Permit's free. Any other unfinished business? Any new business?
Yes.
Alderman, or Alderman McMinim, then Alderman Purchase?
New business. We all get a chance to relax here a while. Why? Because we have no meeting next week, so we can come back in two weeks and be invigorated. Number two, our State Fair, they're having an outstanding State Fair. I was out there with Lynn Sunday. The lines were long all the way across the road, you know, to get something. The roadways were packed with people, individuals, just a wonderful atmosphere, and that's in our hometown. So thanks for everyone who makes the State Fair go so well.
Alderman Purchase?
I had three things. I was going to start with the State Fair. I was going to say how it was so nice to see the community standing in the rain with us.
Oh, yeah.
We got soaked and rained on, but they stood it out right along with us. And I was out there yesterday for Senior Day, and there were so many seniors out enjoying themselves. The weather was perfect, and I'm just happy to see this going on right now. The second one, I wanted to remind everyone that you're invited for a free architect walking tours tomorrow downtown. It starts at 5:30, and we will be walking around the State Capitol under the guidance of the state architect with the reception at the AIA Illinois office. So it starts again at 5:30 to meet downtown at the State Capitol. If you have any questions, you can reach out through Facebook to DSI, or you can give them a call as well. And then my last announcement, I just wanted to commend Springfield High School. On Friday, there was alumni kids who just graduated. They're off to school. And as everyone knows, people were taking their kids to school Friday and Saturday. Well, parents and the kids that, before they left, came to clean up around the school as an initiative and a project. And they brought some of the juniors and incoming freshmen out. And our new officer, Ms. Angie, she came out as well, and our MPO. And it was just a good community group of people out, and we covered a lot of ground. So I just wanted to commend Springfield High School for that. It was awesome. It warmed my heart. Thank you.
The only announcement I have, we did have our first post pandemic, or I guess it's post pandemic, visitors come from Germany, Germany delegation, and it's 19 individuals. There are members of the parliament from different cities, but they all are located, I think, in Berlin. But it was put on by the U.S. Embassy, and then Janet Kenny with the Springfield Commission on International Visitors pulled a lot of that together with regards to their staying here. They were attending the City Council, but they went out to the fair to, I think, enjoy the concert, to get a little Americanized with Willie Nelson out there tonight.
Don't get it.
Hey.
Yep, but we appreciate them being here, and they're here through, I think, Saturday. So anybody else? Is there anybody signed up to speak?
Yep.
I think there's.
Thomas Melton.
We appreciate you sticking around. If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Everybody doing tonight?
Hello?
First of all, excuse me, but I'm here on behalf of myself. I was to talk about the termination of my contract with the city on mowing lots. I believe my contract was terminated for just asking a single question. I have been mowing for the city for three years. And also, they always call me every weekend. I think last summer, I had four weekends where they didn't call me to do extra work, okay? And I don't believe I've ever had a complaint about the work that I do. I'm the type of person, I'm 54 years old, I've lived in the city all my life, never been in trouble with the law, never even had a speeding ticket. So that means I follow orders, and I have respect for people. And my contract was terminated. And also, I'm the type of person that they say, if they got, we got a stick, see if it's orange line, don't mow it. Well, believe me, Mayor, there's sometimes we go out there and it's two foot or better, and we tear our equipment up all the time, okay? I've never said one thing about that. Not one time have I complained. I thought it goes with the business. But why are we mowing two feet? I have no idea when they say 10 inches. And you can go out there right now and check any of them. So with it being two feet, I would mow it twice. Not getting paid extra for that. Even when the gas, wet gas would be high. I'm not getting paid extra for that. I did it because I love the city, and I want my lot to look nice.
So was your contract terminated? What was the question you asked?
I asked, there was a gentleman that had got fired the year before. Okay, I asked Matt, the other guy that works with Daryl, if he could help me, because I had surgery on my foot, so I couldn't do it all by myself. Normally, my son helps me because they want you to use family, which I don't understand, because half or more of these people out here are not using family. They're using friends or whatever. And so anyway, I don't understand that. But anyway, I asked if I could use him because my son, his grandmother had a brain aneurysm. He actually moved in with her to take care of her. That's the only family I got, sir. So I had no other family to use.
Well, if you get with Nate Bodem, he's back there, and we'll see.
I have, I've got with both of Pro Harris and Nate Bodem. They don't want to do nothing. All they do is one of what's saying, is tell me my contract has been terminated. You know what? I've had so much health problems since then. It's ridiculous. I have a son to take care of. I got a granddaughter to take care of. And you know what? Before I cut one time, I had went out and bought a new rider, blower, weed eater, and got insurance.
Well, we'll discuss it. We'll set up a meeting to have all of us sit down and see what can be worked out, if anything. Okay?
Yes, sir. And I, like I said, I love Springfield. Been here all my life, ain't going nowhere.
Well, I appreciate.
I went to land fair, I played basketball, Kevin Campbell, Ed Horton. Maybe you can't tell it now. Maybe you think I played football, but no, I played basketball. But yeah, I mean.
We'll take a look at it. I appreciate it.
I would love to have my job back.
Sure.
You know, I must get tears in my eyes because I did something, I'm not sure. And I do want to say one more thing. And Sean can definitely vouch for this. My son is mixed race. His mom is black and Puerto Rican. Beautiful. White people go pay for her color, his color, you know what I'm saying, for the tan. But I believe, Mayor, that I'm the only white person that cuts grass for the city. I believe. Maybe there's one or two other ones, but I know there's at least 37 contractors. And I'm the only white one? And the person that hired or fired me is African American? I don't know. He never did act like he liked me. Never did. Always turned a cold shoulder towards me.
We'll discuss it next week, okay?
Okay.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much.
Anybody else signed up to speak?
Randy Trams.
If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Randy Trams. This is Anu Qataria. We are with the Route 66 Hotel and Conference Center. We are in Southern View, but we obviously have utilities provided by C W P. I actually have a packet that I just want to give all of you. It kind of summarizes, we acquired the hotel in late 2016, and to establish a transfer service in our name, we had to place a significant deposit. And obviously, the industry's been struggling for a long time. The pandemic put a hurt even more on our business. And we, you know, we looked at trying to review C W P's policies in regards to returning our security deposit. It's been held since 2017, and we had conversation, we sent a letter to the mayor, we sent a letter to Mr. Brown with C W P, and we got a response back a few months later from Mr. Brown. And his response was very, just, you know, by the book, but what it, what said was, C W P has to comply with all the policies, because those activities are audited. And, you know, it kind of has, it's been brought before you guys in the past few weeks, that another industry, hotel industry owes C W P a significant amount of money in it. It made me kind of think about it. And I got a copy of the top 10 debts that are owed to C W P. And of those top 10 commercial accounts, zero of them have a security deposit on file. The alternative is they could have a letter of credit, which is irrevocable, or a surety bond. None of them have a letter of credit or security bond. The policy in C W P states if the, if the account is active and a deposit was given and has been returned, or at any point a deposit is needed, that they can revoke making a deposit happen. Or, and so I look at it as over 1.2 million is owed to the city in the top 10 accounts, and none of those accounts have been asked to place a security deposit, surety bond, or a line of credit. And here we are. And we've had our fair share of issues. Mr. Brown said it. We were, we were behind several months at times. In the last nine months, we have been successfully paying in full the entire debt and have paid monthly, every month since then, on time, before the due date. And we survived the pandemic. You know, things aren't normal, yet back to 100% normal, occupancy still hurting. And we've made significant investments into our, into our property, and all without any help of the grants or programs that this council and the C W put forward, because we were not a business that resided in the city limits. So we're just asking, one, if someone could sit down, if Mayor, we can have a conversation with you and Mr. Brown and talk about this. And have some leniency. If leniency can be done, because obviously it is, I mean, the city's owed 1.1 million, and we're not, no one's knocking on their door saying, where's our line of credit? Where's our, where's our surety bond? Obviously, the policies are, there is leniency in there. I mean, it's, if not, I mean, there's a problem. You guys aren't auditing those policies. It's shocking to think one account's $900,000, but there's several unders that are over $100,000, that nothing has been done to them. So, you know, what I'm looking for is just to get a conversation. But, you know, ultimately, we're current, we will continue to be current. If, we're looking to just have a credit back of the $28,600 back to our account. And we will, if things went south and, you know, we became late again, then follow the policy. Ask us to put a new deposit down, ask us to put a surety bond down, ask us to put a line of credit. You know, obviously, no one's asking that of any other business right now. I'm not worried about the interest of the $28,000. I just, I want to be able to continue employing our employees, continue making significant improvements to our property, and, you know, and just continue as normal. And, you know, it just, it just kind of hurt inside when, when we ask for our deposit back, and, you know, we're told, no, we have to follow the policies, this, that, and another. But, you know, turn around, the city's owed 1.1 million from the top 10 accounts. That's not going down the rest of the list. You guys have it all in front of you. Like you said, Mayor, I would just like to have a meeting with you and Mr. Brown, and we can all talk about this.
Yeah, if a meeting's necessary, it says, I guess, if you've been current for 12 months, you get the deposit back?
So the policy says you have to be current for 24 months with less than two violations during that 24 months. Obviously, we're at nine months right now going into this billing cycle. But, you know, it just was, as I was reading, you know, all this other significant debt on the other top 10 accounts, it just kind of made me, I want to come and, you know, talk to you guys about it.
Sure. I think, I don't know if Doug's still here, but he can set something up?
Yeah.
Not a problem. So appreciate you sticking around.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question.
I'm sorry. Alderman McMinim.
So are you the owners of the motel or managers?
I'm the consultant. He's the operating partner of the hotel.
How many rooms do you have?
Total of 100 occupancy right now. Give it 100 room occupancy.
And you've had this deposit with the city for how long?
Since 2017, when we acquired the property.
Okay, so it hasn't been released because you've had some?
We had some issues when we first took over. We were doing significant capital improvements into the property after we took over, and cash flow was a, was a big issue. And we, we, you know, we were running out of 45, 60 day period to pay invoices, and we got behind. And we paid, you know, we paid the late fees, we paid, you know, we've paid current as of now and not everything since this year. But there was, there was historically, when we, when we first took over, that we were struggling. And then during the pandemic, we struggled even more. But we are current and have been current for the past nine months.
I get the picture. So you're asking for some relief. You want some, some of that deposit released, or have you made a proposal? How much do you want released?
We, we wrote the mayor last year and asked for half of it to be released in a form of a credited account to just help take down what our past due balance was at that point, was the response was given that we could have none of it back. And at this point, we are current, and we would just, we would like it released back to us in full. And credit to the count. The policy states that a check would be cut with interest when it's due back. We're just asking for a credit to the count and that amount, and it'll just offset our future bills coming in.
Okay, I understand. I know that the hotels have been getting behind. We have got a very prominent case like that right now. But so it's a tough, but we're coming out of COVID, so maybe we can get some relief for you.
Get some occupancy back in, and, you know, everything's going. So.
Thanks a lot.
It's been a tough few years.
No doubt. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council? Is there a motion for German?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you.